I'll rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, just as we are a republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You never hear a better pledge than in a school district.
Absolutely. Well, welcome to everyone on this festive and exciting night. Looking forward to this agenda is clearly one of the favorite meetings of the year and also an appropriate end to the school year on a very positive note. Just for a couple of minutes, we have to conduct some business, but I promise it will be quick and then we will get to the matters at hand that you all come for. First, I would ask if there are any comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda?
No.
All right. Hearing none. Then I would ask for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda with one revision, which is item 2.5, Board of Education matter, new board member, which was not discussed in executive session. Other than that, ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So.
All in favor? Okay. So next, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda for personnel, item six, for special services, item seven, and the consent agenda for business, item eight.
Some of them.
All in favor? Okay. Well, with that done, we have a couple of things that are worth pointing out that we approved in that consent agenda. The first is a huge thank you because we accepted a donation from the Armont Community Foundation for $12,000, which will be used in our Wellness Day program. So we clearly extend a heartfelt thank you for that, and we accept it with gratitude. And then I want to turn it over to Jen because we also, in that consent agenda, also want to welcome some new members to our Byram Hills community.
Yes, and just a quick word about the donation. That donation was made in memory of a former student at Byram Hills, Billy Decker. There was a three-on-three basketball tournament. Two former students and Billy's mother came to me and they were looking for a way to give back to the community and help support our children that are in the district today. So that was such a meaningful event and it is beautiful that their thoughts are about propelling this community forward. So much appreciated. And on this consent agenda, another special thing that happened is we had the board vote and agreed to appointments of some new teachers to the district. Some are not such new faces, but are new teachers in these probationary tenure positions. The first one is Toni Ann Urbietta. Toni Ann. We are fortunate, Toni Ann has been with us for a couple of years as a teacher aide, but Toni Ann had a career change. She was in advertising before she came to Byram Hills. She did take a leave of absence to complete her student teaching and then this year spent the year in a leave replacement position. So talk about being able to really nestle your feet into a job before you make a commitment to it or us to you for it. You have gone above and beyond in demonstrating your commitment to these kids, to your colleagues who are here, many of them supporting you tonight. You were a teacher when you were in your teacher aide position. We all know that, that you were supporting kids in every way. And I am really looking forward to, especially after having good conversations with you of talking about what your professional goals are, to continue your learning and to continue to really be a part of Byram Hills. So Toni Ann now, in a different capacity, welcome as a teacher at Coman Hill.
Thanks.
And the next teacher is a teacher who's not new to us either, but she's a teacher who's moving from a part-time position to a full-time position. And I might ask her to sing a few octaves, but it's Dana Salustino. Dana, first I have to give a shout out to your parents because this is now, I think, the fourth time I've met them, which expresses to you that Dana has really become a part of the Byram Hills community. When family comes to every event, and I could spot her parents in a crowd, that means something. So since 2017, Dana has been teaching music part-time at Wampus. And as everybody knows, Morna Weiss has retired from the high school. With some changing of scheduling, it now allows us the opportunity to have Dana as a full-time teacher, which is something we always wanted, but we do have that fiduciary responsibility to make sure staffing that's here is staffing that's necessary. And now it is necessary, and I'm so glad that you had opportunities to be here. I feel like both of these commitments are commitments the district is making to you and you to the district, but we know each other and we understand what that commitment means. So Dana, we're so happy to have you. You're doing such a great job with those kids, passionate about it. Deepak and I have had numerous conversations about you and your work, and it's hard to maintain somebody in a part-time position for a long time. We were always afraid we were going to lose you. So I'm actually glad we're at this juncture where that never had to happen.
Her salary's already set, right?
It's pretty set.
All right.
So yes, welcome. We're so happy to have you with us, full-time Dana.
Thank you.
Not here tonight, she had another engagement, is Rania Cassis. And Rania will be teaching the special class at Crittenen. We have a group of students from Wampus who are moving up to Crittenen this year, and she will be their teacher. I am really excited for her work there. She's worked with students with autism for a number of years. She's been trained in applied behavior analysis with children. Kim Lappel and the crew that interviewed her really did a phenomenal job in bringing her to Byram. Somebody with such experience and specific experience to a group of kids that we really needed. So Kim will be giving her a warm welcome with the faculty, but I wanted to mention her tonight. And although not on this agenda tonight, on our last agenda, but she couldn't be here, but she came tonight because she knew we were throwing a party, Janine Marie DeFalco, the new assistant principal at Coman Hill. You even received hand claps from the Cavalieri children who don't go to Coman Hill. So that is speaking. So Janine Marie has been teaching in Mamaroneck schools. She was at the Chatsworth Avenue School for a number of years, and in her last role there was a learning zone coordinator, which meant that she was somebody who really supported and facilitated teacher learning in her school district. She's done quite a bit with data and we couldn't be more thrilled to have you. I understand you had a great day today seeing teachers at Coman Hill, and you will be a fantastic partner to Mary Beth. We welcome you, and in any way we can support you, we will.
Thank you very much.
And anything else on consent agenda for business? No, I think we're good there. Okay, Scott.
Great. Okay, so we are on to our special report tonight, which is Teacher Recognition and the Longevity Service Awards.
Right, and back to me. This is sort of like tennis match. Tennis, we're used to this. So Teacher Recognition Award. We have been doing this since, I think, the spring of 1981. It was even before I came here. Raise your hand if you weren't yet born in 81. No, I'm just kidding, don't do that. There are many people who probably weren't. Byram Hills, since that time, has recognized 135 teachers. These are teachers who, don't worry, leave that child in this room. These are teachers, and the purpose of this award is to really highlight special service and special commitment to our schools. This is identifying a particularly distinguished contribution that a teacher has made. Now, we know the roles of a teacher. To go into classrooms, to educate our students, to facilitate their learning. These are teachers who have gone out of their way either to collaborate with others in a very special way or to bring new insights into Byram Hills that can really help us grow and learn. I am so proud that Byram Hills is not the same school it was five years ago, 10 years ago, or in 1990 when I came. It is a very different place, and it's due to teachers like this who bring something new to us to think about, to help us continue to be professional in our craft, to learn, to grow, to experiment, to be critical friends, to give good judgment. So tonight, I am happy to say that for Coman Hill, the Teacher Recognition Award goes to Leslie Goldfarb. Leslie Goldfarb. On stage standing, I want you to be joined by some friends at Wampus. Although she's retiring, she wasn't getting out of here without a Teacher Recognition Award. Kathleen Oliveto. And the one who has changed the face of libraries forever at HC Crittenen, Barbara Barthelmess. Barbara, Antoinette tried to get a picture of you, but she has your back, so can you just turn to her right now and let her get up and do that one more time? And at the high school, David Hubs. And now you should sit down because I'm going to get a little long-winded and weepy in my descriptions. I asked the building principals, and this is what happens every year, to really talk to others and to think about what words would we like to say about our teacher recognition recipients tonight. So Mary Beth Crouppie and Leslie Goldfarb at Coman Hill. Mary Beth says, Leslie Goldfarb is an outstanding teacher, and perhaps most importantly, she is a remarkable individual. As Coman Hill's math specialist, Leslie models continuous reflection in her practice, uses student work samples, assessments, and her own observations to contemplate best strategies to introduce new math concepts. No teaching decision is taken lightly, as Leslie carefully deliberates how to reach each and every student so they can achieve their highest potential. This careful and deliberate planning is observed regularly as Leslie collaborates with teachers at Coman Hill. With a new math program investigations being rolled out, Leslie has been instrumental with its successful implementation. From the beginning, she assisted with behind-the-scenes management, helped to organize materials classroom teachers would need, worked collaboratively with aides, creating games that are essential to the math workshop lessons, and teaches side-by-side with teachers, establishing a collaborative teaching environment. For teachers and students, the learning environment was about embracing mistakes while doing something new and learning from these mistakes so tomorrow's lesson and learning would be bigger and better. As a person, Leslie is just simply amazing. I would love for somebody to just say that. Who says that? Who hears that, right? I'm going to say it again, Leslie. As a person, Leslie is just simply amazing. She is so humble that she never takes credit for the work she does behind the scenes to help everyone succeed. Leslie has helped the students, teachers, and administrators succeed in so many aspects of our daily life. She has revised IST practices, she's someone to listen to and ponder next steps, she's the kind of friend and colleague that everyone dreams to have at least once in a lifetime. So on behalf of everyone at Coman Hill, we thank Leslie for helping us embrace learning and for making us better students, teachers, and administrators. So beautiful. And I'm going to give you these at the end. And something Mary Beth said about Leslie that I find so true, humble. Leslie didn't want these accolades. She said, oh, no, no, there are a lot of other people who are doing this. Right, okay, Leslie, a lot of people are doing a lot of great work. You did an amazing job, and you do an amazing job, and we're so happy to celebrate you. Congratulations. Next, oh, where's Kathleen Oliveto? I mean, I could really speak off the cuff on this one, but I have it. Peggy McInerney has recommended Kathleen Oliveto for 2019, although she's retiring. Kathleen is the perfect recipient for this award because of her devotion to Wampus. In 1999, I've been here longer than you, and you're retiring, I just want to point that out. In 1999, Ms. Oliveto began her career as a fourth-grade teacher in the Byram Hills School District. Then, where, Ira? At Coman Hill, remember?
I remember the year we voted to switch.
This is when Coman Hill was the third and fourth grade building. Ms. Oliveto moved to a new building in 2001 when the fourth-grade students moved to Wampus. She has been the anchor of the fourth-grade team ever since. Ms. Oliveto, and by the way, her entire family, her husband, I'm adding here, but her husband, who's at lots of events, her grandchildren who are here, her daughter, her son-in-law, I mean, we have a, raise your hand if you have any connection to Kathleen Oliveto. So how about, can I change this, Peggy? Kathleen Oliveto and her family are devoted to Byram Hills. Through the years, Ms. Oliveto has always put the care of children at the forefront of her work. She is known as a teacher who will go the extra mile for her students inside and outside the walls of her classroom. Ms. Oliveto has celebrated wonderful events in her students' lives, and she's been a steadfast rock for students and their families during very difficult times. The important thing to note about Ms. Oliveto is she always shows up for her children and their families. The generosity of self has been a hallmark for Kathleen Oliveto throughout the years. She wants everyone to feel part of our community. Each year, she builds the Wall of American Heroes at the entrance to Wampus. She welcomes members of our district to join together to create the Byram Hills Veterans Day Wall of American Heroes. The American flag at the front entranceway to Wampus is covered with personal photographs and stories of men and women who have served or are currently serving in our nation's armed forces. Ms. Oliveto has strengthened the Byram Hills family as all veterans are remembered for their dedication, bravery, and sacrifice. She is dedicated to her colleagues as she strives to make Wampus great. Over the years, she has taken the lead on beautifying the school. Most recently, and if you haven't seen this, you must, she created a display of handmade butterflies along the library cafeteria corridor. She invited members of Wampus to add colorful flowers to these walls. She understands how to build a community of care, compassion, and kindness. During the school year, Mr. McInerney, Peggy McInerney says, have worked tirelessly to build community at Wampus for the entire student body, our faculty, and parents. Ms. Oliveto has been a cheerleader for this work because she knew this could be a reality at Wampus. As she observes from her chair during community meetings, she smiles and studies the room, sensing the feel in the air of happiness as our children are together, working to be the best they can be for themselves, each other, and our community. Ms. Oliveto exemplifies the district goal to building communities of care and compassion where service to others and kindness prevail. And it is Peggy's pleasure to recommend her for the 2018-19 Teacher of the Year Award. Next, Barbara Barthelmess, librarian at HC Crittenen Middle School. When I tell you that she has changed the scope of library learning for every child, I mean it. Kim Lappel says, our school is guided by an essential question that encapsulates our vision in the middle school. It reads, "How do we, at HCC, create an active learning community where everyone is empowered to take risks and to embrace rigor while maintaining a balanced, healthy mindset?" Ms. Barthelmess has embodied, I just want to call you Barbara. Barbara has embodied this mission in all of her work this past year through partnerships with faculty members from every discipline and grade level, giving students a multitude of learning experiences. Through her collaborative spirit, Barbara united with other colleagues to develop a wellness experience for students and faculty on two separate occasions. Teachers and students could choose mindful art or music workshops in which to participate, allowing them to be cognizant of ways to reduce stress and live a healthier lifestyle. This past summer, the library of HCC was transformed, thanks to the Byram Hills Education Foundation, into a state-of-the-art media center. Barbara dedicated long hours, I was there, I saw her, sifting through books and resources, ensuring that this renovation not only changed the physical appearance of the library, but the manner that students could utilize these resources with space. Through these actions, she modeled risk-taking by moving beyond print materials, introducing new avenues for the community to access information electronically. An example of this is the rollout of SURA, an ebook, notebook, audiobook collection, which has helped her role as leader through the region. In developing the new center, she has integrated what she's learned from her own professional learning into the fabric of a new media center. Barbara attended a Makey Makey Invention Literacy Workshop and continues to refine her practice with makerspace activities. During lunch, students gravitate to the creative corner to collaborate and create new inventions, while students in the life skills class and their peer buddies have dedicated time to enjoy STEAM activities under her guidance. I might also add that she is the recipient of a recent Byram Hills Education Foundation Insta-grant, which will support her with materials for that work. Through her own active learning, she brought the green screen technology to Crittenen, enhancing curriculums at three grade levels. Students have filmed and created videos for curricular projects such as ancient civilizations, the Great Migration, and planetary real estate. You love that project. Barbara has been generous and visionary in realizing the importance of sharing the benefits of technology with faculty and parents, presenting at faculty meetings and principals' coffees. Finally, she never forgets the importance of bringing literature to life and finding organic connections to grade-level curriculums. Through her efforts, Mr. Steve Shankin, the author of The Notorious Benedict Arnold and Baum, The Race to Build and Steal the World's Most Dangerous Weapon, visited Crittenen to share his research techniques with seventh and eighth-grade students. Barbara's efforts transcend all departments and grade levels. She is constantly seeking opportunities to enrich our children's lives and learning experiences. She has transformed our physical space into an active learning environment that fosters curiosity, creativity, and collaboration for students and faculty. Thank you and congratulations. And last but not least, David Hubs. David Hubs, who I might say I was his English chairperson many moons ago. David Hubs has always acted in service of the entire Byram Hills community, says Chris Walsh. He is a leader, albeit self-admittedly, an unassuming one, and he deserves to be recognized. In the classroom, David dedicates himself to the principles of continuous improvement and engagement. His own harshest critic, he has built a career as one of the architects of the English curriculum, spending most of his time working with sophomores, although always willing to do what's needed to help the entire department. But what truly distinguishes David's teaching is his knowledge of students as individuals. As a mentor teacher, he plays a key role in introducing freshmen to the Byram Hills culture. A student-centered educator, his communication with students and parents alike involves all parties in the discussion of the whole child. Well before the district formally partnered with Challenge Success, David was working to help students manage their anxiety. Chris Walsh says he can think of countless hours and emails sent by David that get to the heart of what we care about at Byram, providing students with a supportive learning environment. Of course, David's role in the community stretches well beyond the classroom. For years, he has been stockpiling used formalware as part of Operation Prom, a clothing drive sponsored by the 10th Grade Activities Board that provides students across the U.S. with opportunities to share in one of the greatest traditions of high school life. This year, David supported students in the Youth Against Cancer Club, acting as one of their advisors. Through his years at Byram, he's always been a leader, but this year, it was obvious that he has a lasting impact on the Byram Hills community. A team player, he always puts the needs of the district ahead of his own. I might add that his daughter just had her graduation today, and he's here now. A team player, he puts those needs ahead of his own. When co-teaching made its way to sophomores, he was the first person to set to work immediately. After watching him in action, it's easy to see what makes him a part of this community. Simply put, his preparation for co-teaching English 10 has been extraordinary. Whether infusing methodologies learned from professional development workshops or meeting with his co-teacher to refine instruction, his actions have been with his students' best interest in mind. The days of teaching in silos has come to an end, yay, and David has embraced the change with open arms. Every day, he works to make certain his efforts will benefit all students in his classes. Congratulations, David. I told the Board of Education tonight that I think I've cried like 15 times in my life, but one of them was when I read your portfolio. Do you remember?
You tell that story a lot.
He wrote at the end how he would want, I couldn't remember the exact words, and I was like, darn, then I didn't take a picture of that because, you know, we didn't have cellphones back then. But what he wrote about how he would want kids to remember him was something that actually, when I read his portfolio as your English chair, I shared it with everyone, it moved us all to tears. And you're still that way today. So congratulations.
And just to add a quick, there were so many great accolades, and it was very eloquent what everybody wrote about these award winners, but just to add to the mix, it takes a lot to run a school district. There's resources, there's policies, there's good governance, there's all kinds of things. But at the end of the day, what the research will tell you is it's about that teacher and student relationship, and that's the number-one predictor of student success and student outcomes. And you all have proven the fact that winning this award, you're not only outstanding teachers, and not only are you impacting the students that are in your class or visiting the library, but also, in addition to that, you're impacting so many different parts of the building and therefore other students that you may not even have in your class or may not be in the library at the time. And that's just something to be incredibly proud of, working with your colleagues to do that. So we're just incredibly proud of you and your work, and congratulate you.
Now, if you can come up with your graduation diploma. It really looks like it. All right.
Let's just line up our note up here.
I want you to get one more hand clap. Leslie Goldfarb.
No, I'll have to, thank you.
You're supposed to say yes and tell me later, you don't have to. And just a, well said by our principals. Thank you so much for such thoughtful words. I'm only the deliverer. And next, we have longevity service awards. So tonight, we are celebrating faculty and staff longevity. Combined, the longevity recipients have a combined 390 years of dedication to Byram Hills. 390 years. So I consider this longevity thing like a wedding anniversary, a little bit, right? So we, when you think about wedding anniversaries and you think about medieval times, they used to do something at 25 years, you know, and not to be sexist or whatever, or say how relationships should be, but the husband would take a silver crown and put it on the head of the wife, or at 50 years, a gold crown. And then, of course, that sort of wedding celebration transformed over time, and we have people tonight who have 20 years of being married to Byram Hills, 25 years of being married, and 30. and receive a token of appreciation from the district. But when I talk about a marriage, I mean, consider another word for marriage just being a commitment. You've really made a commitment to being here. All of us around this table have, well, with the exception of Kelly, who's committed for a year so far, but he's going to be a lifer also. We've all committed our professional careers, our minds, our growth, our hearts to the children of this district. Byram Hills is a very special place, and we've all recognized that. You are all very talented people who could have gone somewhere else, but you didn't because you were an invested partner in being here, and that's what that commitment means to us. When I walk around the district and I say, "Well, today I celebrated a combined 390 years of dedication to Byram Hills," it makes me really proud. Proud to work with you every single day and proud to have said, "We're making that commitment together for all of these children." I can't imagine, if I tried to count the number of children that as teachers, or as teacher aides, or as staff members that you have impacted, I don't know what that number would look like. And that ultimately is the mission of our work, and every day that you come here and you share with others, you're committing to that mission. So, happy anniversary. I want to thank you, and on behalf of the district, I want to thank you and the board for your care, your compassion, your continued learning, and the joy you bring to work every day. This is our passion and our dedication. It's not our job, and that, to make that distinction is enormous in what we do.
Yeah, and I would just add that a lot of the articles about education these days talk about teacher shortages, right? And I just pulled one written by Lynda Dellicham, who's out of Stanford, and she said that of the 90% of open teaching positions created by teachers that leave the profession, 2/3 are leaving because of dissatisfaction with teaching, and then the rest is basically retirement. Scary. And so, this teacher attrition problem is one that really plagues our country, and when we look at what we have here, it really is something unique and powerful and special. And so, with that longevity, we really do appreciate your commitment to this community, and the community appreciates the fact that we have you here because it's really what makes us unique.
Can I jump in for one second on this?
Yeah, please.
Since we're talking about longevity.
How many years on the board? 392?
There was a guy named Columbus. No. All I wanted to say was, I know most of you, and I remember when many of you were hired, most of you. But the only point I wanted to make is that we thrive because of our culture. Why is Byram Hills successful? Why is Byram Hills... Why do teachers want to come here? Why do administrators want to come here? Why do parents want to bring their children within the boundaries of the school district? It's because of the Byram Hills culture. And evenings like this simply reinforce the fact we've been very successful in developing a Byram Hills culture that empowers teachers, empowers administrators, empowers students. And I couldn't be prouder than to look out at this audience and see what's grown here. For a public school district, the students we send out into the world, I would match up against any school, public or private, in this country. We do excellent work. Your teachers, we've always... We know what goes on in the classroom. Our former superintendent said, "It's watching teachers and students do things wonderful together." And that's what happens every day at Byram Hills, and may it always continue to happen every day at Byram Hills. We are very, very proud of you, and above all, we're proud of the culture, and we're proud of your part in maintaining the Byram Hills culture and letting it grow and flourish. So, for me, my personal congratulations on jobs, very well done, and that will continue to be very well done. We are in your debt. Thank you very much.
And now, we have china, silver, and pearls to hand out.
On the school budget.
And it's a good thing we're all in here.
Windows rolled up.
Yeah. I'm going to start with 20 years of service. Who's not here tonight, but I would like to recognize Brenda Tui from Coleman Hill. Also not here, Allison Rosenfeld from Byram Hills High School. My friend, Chris Rasquain.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Not here, but we had a celebration with him today. Rich Peterman from Operations Maintenance. When we see him, please congratulate him. It meant a lot to him. He couldn't come because he works like 90 hours a day. Our very own Joanne Nash. Byram Hills High School, and retiring. That's what you get. Oh. Joanne, he's been up in front of her graduation. From Coleman Hills, Susan Liebman. From H.C. Crittenen Middle School, not here tonight though, Kim Costello. From Coleman Hill, and with much applause from her two children, Cole Cavalier. 20 years in the district in multiple capacities, as a teacher, and then as our very own middle school assistant principal, Mr. Angelo. Brother?
Sister.
For at least a dozen years, kids at the middle school somehow thought we were related.
Not because we lied to them.
For 20 years at the high school, well-known, well-revered Matt Al. Take a picture with him. Did you get that, yeah? We're going to blow that up for next year's. Okay, at Coleman Hill for 25 years, somebody who's been a teacher at Coleman Hill, but also is our Byram Hills Teachers Association president and a good friend to everyone in this district, Susan Terrell. At Coleman Hill, I really love to attend his classes, and he's good. He lets me do all of the activities in high heels. John McManus. At Coleman Hill, and joined today by her children and her husband, also an employee of Byram Hills, they can't get enough Byram, Terry Hammerhand. We have these families that are everything Byram. And for 25 years, but not here tonight, at H.C. Crittenen Middle School, Jill Berner. Now, 30 years of service.
That would have been for all twice.
How much I adore my, and have a hard time fitting into, my 12-by-12 spot on Jean White's carpeting conveyor. And I also have a 12-by-12 slot in Elise Fader's room. And last but not least, 30 years, and I've taught all of her children, Judy Dejarla. And to see the beautiful artwork that happens, it's unreal. My favorite is those strings. So, I would like to ask everybody to say, and then one more thing I would like to say before you leave, but to conclude this portion of it, this, go home today with your silver, your china, your pearls, open it up and say, "This is a testament to my commitment and to Byram Hills' commitment to me. We're so happy that you chose this place." Thank you.
Yes, we are.
And now, I have just two additional things to talk about that I would like to have everybody here for because they're very important to all of us. This also marks the china year for our board member, Ira Schulman. Get some Wedgwood. All right. So, not only has Ira been here for 20 years, he was also recognized by the Armac Chamber of Commerce, along with our Education Foundation, of which Jason Burland is here tonight. Ira was awarded the Citizen of the Year, and I had the pleasure of speaking about him at the Chamber of Commerce dinner. And I'd like to have an opportunity to say what I said that night to a crowd of people who knew Ira, but most of which were outside of the school community. So, tonight I have the distinction of telling a Byram Hills story I told a month or so ago and connecting a much different Byram Hills past to the Byram Hills that so many of us know today. I have the distinction of sharing the Ira Schulman Byram Hills story, a story about a man who has shepherded Byram through changes that make us so proud. Ira has helped to shape the history of Byram Hills because Ira has passion, and Dr. Evan Powderly's favorite word, fidelity. During the 1990s, Ira's passion was to support an unparalleled education in a beautiful place for all children. That meant collaborating with Board of Education champions like Eve Rice and Wendy Gardner to create expectations for a rigorous curriculum, working with John Grimes to realize an approach to cultural proficiency, and what the culture of Byram means for our students, and board members, past and present, who helped to ensure that Byram hired the very best teachers, yet remained fiscally responsible. Ira's level of passion 20 years ago as a board member is the same as it is today, to support public schools for the benefit of all children. His passion has resulted in unparalleled stewardship of our school community, which has ultimately supported programs such as the Integrated Co-Teach Model in Special Education, Global Scholars at Byram Hills High School, and over a dozen new high school courses since 2016. Ira Schulman's fidelity to Byram is consistent with this passion and consistently evident. Ira is a man who's always boasting about Byram. He has been our board member for two decades, president seven times, telling our current board about the history of policies that guide us today. Ira is a big part of the history of this board, serving with, start counting on your fingers, all right, John Gebhardt, Rick Kaplan, Lynn Bernstein, remember these names? Marion Hamilton, Lisa Deutsch, Amy Fennow, Wendy Gardner, and Eve Rice, Louis Brusco, John Grimes, Gail Reese, Aunt Tedesco, Leslie Blum, Albin Burke, Brett Summers, and the six other board members who are here. He has supported five of the seven Byram Hills superintendents in our history, Judy Fox, John Chambers, Jackie Taylor, Bill Donahue, and now me. He is the voice of Byram Athletics, right, Matt? Following and supporting our student athletes every year and sharing in their accolades. He may be found at sectional and state championships, and then town parades through Armac, celebrating our athletes. Ira, you were recently celebrated by the Armac Chamber of Commerce, and you are celebrated by our school community here tonight because you have cultivated excellence. You've supported the most innovative programs, you've embraced our community partners and stakeholders, and you continue to be a responsible and revered custodian of Byram Hills. Byram Hills School District and your Board of Education are proud to celebrate you today. We're grateful for your service to children and to public education. Happy 20th anniversary. It's not china, it's cotton, but I think you'll wear better than china.
And let me just add, Ira, on behalf of the board, when I first came onto the board and I probably was elected for no more than one day, I got a call from Ira, and he took me to lunch, and it didn't take five minutes, it took about 30 seconds to know that you have, every step of the way, the best interest of this district at heart, and all of your actions and the way in which you conduct yourself on this board. And we're just so thrilled to have you here because there's so many decisions that we face that that context of history and your good judgment that you still have today factors into the mix, and you really add a great deal of value to us as board members and to the district. So, we really are so thankful for your service and for your unwavering support of this district. Jen said it really well.
I really didn't know this was going to happen, and I usually don't like surprises, certainly not in my job, but this is very, very meaningful to me. To my board colleagues who put up with my history lessons, thank you for this honor. To Jen, I told Jen on the way out, on the way into this room, that I never regretted making that phone call to Brazil to get her back to Byram Hills, and I never have and I never will. She's been such a rock. And to Tim and Kelly and Gina, who we still have here at Byram Hills. This is a great team, and I'm just fortunate to be a part of this team and to have the honor to do it for 20 years that my community members have seen fit to elect me, my goodness, seven times to the board, is obviously a very humbling and very meaningful thing to I wish that my two brothers could be here to celebrate with me tonight. It'd be something they really would have enjoyed. And Betty's going to be mad at me for not knowing about this in advance if she could have been here, because she's entitled to a lot of the congratulations to putting up with all those meetings that I've gone to over 20 years. So, Betty, I'm going to make sure you watch this video. You're going to hear me say how still crazy I'm about you and how I thank you for letting me do this for the Byram Hills community. As a point of fact, this week, we did celebrate our 37th anniversary, so it shows you the staying power of Betty and my good judgment. So anyway, there's more to do tonight. So from the bottom of my heart to my board colleagues, to Jen, to everyone here, this is so meaningful to me. Thank you so very much.
And I have one more thing, and I made it through thus far. If I just start dripping water, just bear with me. But I have one more thing I want to, one more person I want to recognize tonight, and that is Robin Glad. She was like, darn it, I thought this was her. Robin Glad. So tonight marks the last night that Robin Glad is serving on this term as a Byram Hills Board of Education member. Now, it's not to say in three or four years she may not want to try to do this again, but her third term is now ending. Robin has had three consecutive terms on this board, totaling nine years. And she's been vice president once and president twice. One of her terms as president was during my first year as superintendent. Robin was committed to my success. Personally, I want to thank you for your thoughtfulness, always. For being so balanced and for delivering all intentions with integrity and eloquence. You're really a class act. You are a role model to follow. You are someone to emulate and somebody to revere. And I emulate you and revere you. In the year 2000, All About Armonk published an exposé of you. Do you remember that? As a Byram Hills Board--
I found it.
Expose.
As a Byram Hills Board of Education candidate. I have it here today and it highlights her commitment to the community, her proven professional leadership, and her goal to make a difference. So nine years after this article was written, the words used to describe Robin are still true today, and I'm going to read them. Robin Glad, proven commitment to the children of the community, balanced, thoughtful, intelligent decisions on behalf of all of our children, passionate advocate for our district, strong background in creating policy. A leader and professional, innovative and driven to make a difference, able to work as a team player fostering an environment of mutual respect while not relying on status quo, willing to listen and be able to act. And Robin, on May 18, 2010, the Byram Hills School Community chose you and they were right to do so. And today, we thank you for choosing us. We are going to miss you terribly. Thank you so much for all of your leadership and all of your lessons. You still look like that. And we have the Byram Hills School District honors Robin Glad for dedicated service as Board of Education trustee from 2010 to 2019. That's its little nest of boxes.
Oh, okay.
So I told this to Robin about a week ago, but just for everybody's benefit. So nine years ago, Robin decided to join a board. And if she had joined a corporate board, let's say a small cap corporate board, public company, she probably would have earned about $150,000 a year in stock options and in cash. Times nine years, that's $1.35 million and it would have been a very nice retirement home in Florida. And it probably would have been less of a time. And her husband would have been very happy. But instead, nine years ago, she chose on public school board service. And instead of measuring the dollars, we measure it in students that have come through since Robin's been on the board. So between the students that have already graduated and then the students that are in the system right now, there's 4,000 students that have passed through Byram Hills with you as the steward of the district as a member of this board. And not only have you impacted these 4,000 students, but you really have taught all of us so much that your legacy on this board, even though you won't be at this table, will truly be there. And I mean that sincerely. Following in your footsteps as president, you taught me so much about what it's like to be a thoughtful and good leader of a board. And I constantly ask your counsel, and unfortunately, I won't be able to do that in the same way next year, but we will always be thinking of the impact that you left on us and we just truly appreciate your partnership in making this district a great place. So thank you.
And in a few years, maybe Ira will call you and see if you want to come back to Byram.
Yeah, that's right. Robin, as someone who's spent these nine years with you, I just want to say that from day one to today, you've impressed me as a person of unparalleled integrity, really. Every issue, you've taken a stand, whether I agree with you or not. I always believe you were coming at it from the best interest of the children. You never came in with any preset agenda. You were always willing to listen, from time to time change your mind. Sometimes you changed my mind, not that old, but time to time. But in all seriousness, Scott is right. You've left a wonderful and strong legacy here at Byram Hills. And to serve nine years, three terms, is a true mark of excellence. You will be very, very missed around our table. But all things, I guess, move on from time to time. But I for one will miss you very much because you've brought so much to the Board of Education and you've helped us through so many issues and times with your thoughtfulness and your diligence. So we return you to your family unharmed. And we wish you nothing but good health and success, really.
And I'll be real quick, I just have everything planned to say. I just want to say that it has truly been an honor to serve this community and to work with such incredible people around this table year and year. Truly, truly my honor. Thank you. I'm going to miss you all. On Tuesday nights at 11.
I'm going to watch. Going to watch on my TV.
All right, with that, we'll take a break and then we'll continue the meeting in just a couple minutes.
To a wonderful presentation and much well-deserved for many people. But we'll shift gears a little bit and I'm here to speak to you about the year in Interscholastic Athletics for our district, the middle school and the high school. And I'm thankful for this opportunity to stand here and talk about something I love. I'm proud of this program and the programs that we offer. And we have a full complement, we offer a full complement of athletic opportunities over the course of three seasons, so we cram all of this into 10 months and it seems to work out somehow. We have 17 sports and 65 teams, grade seven through 12. And I believe we have something for everybody if they're interested in finding something in Interscholastic Athletics. And I am, oh, I'm going the wrong way there, sorry. Our participation numbers remain about the same here at the high school. The fall season remaining our, the season that has our highest number of participants. Winter always being the lowest, having the lowest number because we offer the least amount of opportunities. And in the spring, then climbs up again. And right there, we hover about a 35% participation rate at the high school. And the middle school, our numbers hover around 30% participation. And you could see then it follows the same in the fall, the winter, and the spring as the participation--
Is that consistent over the years, that 30%?
Yes, 30, 35, 35 to 30% has been consistent.
What about the high school?
The high school, consistent around 35%.
When you think about our peer districts, do you think it's in the same zone or are we doing greater participation or less participation?
We're in the same zone. Usually it rains, it rains at a high end about 43% from some of the research that I've done. Looking at our numbers, I like to know what the others are putting out. So that's a great question. I think we're doing okay. I'm happy with the numbers. Accomplishments. So I'd like to, I'd like to speak about some of our accomplishments and there were many this year and they were exciting. We compete in a very competitive, our leagues are competitive. Our conference, we're in conference two, and our conference is very competitive within the Section 1 boundaries. And this slide alone is impressive when we talk about the number of championships, league championships, and all-league athletes and all-section athletes and all-conference as well. And the number of our school records that have been set this year in swimming and track and field, to mention a few. And I know the athletes and the coaches are proud of that. We're all proud of that. But it shows a commitment from our athletes, our coaches, our teachers, our administrators, our parents, and of course, our school board that supports our program. And we're thankful for that. And within this list, right, so there's championships, there's some great accomplishments, but there's also some life lessons. There is some close games and a lot of cheering along the way. But maintaining this level of composure when we talk about sportsmanship recognition, there at the top, I like to talk about sportsmanship recognition and maintaining that from year to year, regardless of how many championships we win or we compete in, is extremely important and it's extremely important to me. And I would really like to point out that this year, the Westchester County Umpires Association awarded the Byram Hills School District the Sportsmanship Award, the Sportsmanship Award for all of Section 1. And that was for modified for junior varsity and for varsity. And the umpires vote on that. And when I went to the banquet for the umpires at the end of the year and I was honored to receive this recognition and to hear the stories that were told, all positive, maybe it's because I was in the room, but no. There were positive stories about their interactions with Byram Hills student athletes and coaches. And it was just a proud night that I shared with the coaches and our athletes and our teachers, of course, and now with you. It's something that we will never waver in that. Regardless of the league play, regardless of the championship, the level of play, the sportsmanship is first and foremost. And you know, Scott, there's something that you said before, it's the relationship, right? It's the relationship that is the foundation between the teacher and the student. And it's the same between the coach and the athlete, the student athlete. And that's something that where sportsmanship, that's the foundation of sportsmanship when we want to let people know that we care about our competitor, but we want to have fun along the way. So I'm really proud of that accomplishment this year. I put that at the top and--
What a great reputation to have.
Yeah, so that was really a nice recognition.
It really is a change from years past. When Byram Hills Sportsmanship was a detriment to getting officials to come here to do games. It was difficult. They didn't want to come here. We had a bad reputation in sports, in sportsmanship, we really did. It wasn't a proud thing for Byram Hills, but over the last, I'd say 15 years, we really turned it around and this seems to be a wonderful culmination of the effort by the athletic directors and the coaches and the kids to really learn what's important. Which is a little question for you. If what I'm hearing is right, there is going to be only an increasing shortage in officials. And how is that at all going to play into the sports we offer or the ability to run the program we want to run?
There already is a shortage.
Yeah.
So it's, what helps us, it's just that, it's when the officials receive their assignment that they don't turn the assignment back, that they want to come to Byram Hills to officiate a game. So when I took the podium, when I came to the podium to accept the award, the recognition that night from the umpires, I mentioned to them the 10 most important words that I like to communicate and I put out and please, thank you, I appreciate you, and how can I help? And I let the officials know that whenever I greet them or whenever my assistants greet them at the field, the first thing is thank you for coming here today. We appreciate the fact that you came here to Byram Hills to help us with our events. And they appreciated that. And a few of them came up afterwards and said, you know, you're not just saying that. I remember last week I was at Byram Hills and the first thing you said to me was thank you for being here. So I believe in that. I believe in the officials, that we need them to help us do what we need to do.
But I guess my question goes a one step further, which is what, is there anything that the Byram Hills District can do or your group can do to increase the number of people who are actually willing to officiate and learn and get out there? I mean, how would we go to grow the ranks in a D1 community that may not necessarily be disposed to us?
Through the coaching organizations and through Southern Westchester BOCs, there have been recently, and there continue to be campaigns, postings, to recruit officials and to, you know, through the training of officials, through the recruitment of that, to really make an effort to spread the word and to advocate how important they are. And I think it's all, it's everyone's responsibility in that to let them know that they're respected. And that's something that I believe, it's definitely my responsibility and I take that seriously.
I just see the, just looking at the boys and girls soccer games in the fall, some of those officials have a hard time keeping up with the play, not because they're bad officials, they're just getting up there.
Right.
And it's almost unfair to ask them to keep up with the play of 15, 16-year-old student athletes. So I just hope, and maybe this is something that BOCs and maybe with the new leadership in Section 1, maybe that could be a springboard for increasing the ranks. But I'm really concerned that the student athletes can suffer because of this, especially the JV programs like JV field hockey and things where, it's just hard to get officials. And these kids need their games properly officiated.
And some sports are harder than others.
Yeah.
But through the recruitment efforts, hopefully that can make a difference. But I also believe it's up to each school district how they acknowledge the officials when they come to the field of play or the courts.
And that's probably the way they're treated in general, in these sports in general, is probably they've got a lot to do with why people aren't flocking to do this.
And it really is. It's everyone's responsibility to acknowledge the officials in a positive way. And if they disagree with something, as I always said, if you disagree, it's okay. You can disagree, but do it silently.
Your mother shouldn't be jumping onto the board, onto the field with baseball bats?
No.
And posting videos on YouTube about it?
So--
Really?
I just, you know, think we all--
Not here.
Yeah, the fistfights over--
So they have a tough job. It's not easy. And thank you for acknowledging that. It is something that we need to all--
I just hope we're doing our part, that's all. I just hope we're doing our part.
I believe we are. And it's something that's very important to me, to let them know that they're appreciated and we respect what they do. Thank you. In the area of scholarship and tying academics, obviously with athletics, is extremely important. And this year, we had eight of our teams recognized by the New York State High School Athletic Association as Scholar-Athlete Teams, which we're proud of. We had three Con Edison Award winners, the prestigious Con Ed Award--
That's a lot for one year, by the way. That really is a lot. For one school in one year to get three is unusual.
We were the third highest this year in Westchester County. So we're extremely proud of that. And something new that has come onto the scene is the News 12 Scholar-Athlete Award. We had two this year. We're extremely proud of that. And the Golden Dozen Football Award recognizes the best of the best in the county for commitment and community service and academic achievement and as well as the Diamond Nine for baseball as well. So we tie that together with sportsmanship awards. I think our program is on the right track and it's my goal to keep us there. But along the way, there are challenges, right? So every organization has challenges. With the number of coaching positions that we have, we have new coaches assignments, some coaches within that 49 number of new coaching assignments. Some coaches shifted to a new team or to a new level of the sport. Some coaches were just new to our program, so we had some turnover. And obviously with coaching, there is a time commitment and certification requirements that I have to make sure are in place. But most importantly, and I said this, you've heard me say this, and I'll always stand true to this, stand behind this, it's finding the right fit for Byram-- true to this, stand behind this, it's finding the right fit for Byram Hills community. The coaches that can come here and work in our culture, in our philosophy, what we stand for, such as sportsmanship at all levels, at all times. So those are some of the challenges that are present, that we're working through, but it's nothing that we can't work through, it's just taking the time to make sure we have the coaches that make, we have the right fit here for them.
Rob, are any programs being dropped because we haven't been able to find coaches? Like, we have enough students, but not find a coach?
Because we can't find a coach? No, no. Not many, for a certain situation, we might not have a lot of coaches to choose from, but we do our best to fill that spot, so that the students can remain active and participate in the sport that we have ready for them.
What percentage of the coaches are also teachers here? You want to talk about that number?
We're about fifty percent of our coaches are teachers.
And I think that's a key ingredient on so many different fronts, it's obviously difficult, but it's a key ingredient, they're here, they're plugged into the district, they're committed. You know, I think your turnover comes more from the non-employee, you know, non-teachers in the district, right?
And that turnover that you just mentioned, from the coaches that are not teachers, it's because we have to find people that are available at 2:30, 2:40 PM, five days a week, that they could be here from 2:40 to 5:30, or so, let's say. And that's part of the challenge. But I didn't mention up before with the challenges, but it falls into that line of, that bullet line of time commitment, and that they could be here, and also on the weekends for most teams at the varsity level. So my vision here, you know, moving away from, you know, okay, so I mentioned that we have some challenges within the organization that I run, but there's also a vision. And my vision is to continue to align the varsity, the junior varsity, and the modified programs. And what does that mean, you know, to align them, to continue to align them? It's to have the varsity head coach to continue to have a connection to the junior varsity and the modified levels. And we are so fortunate that our varsity head coaches have that mindset, that they are eager to touch the junior varsity and the modified programs, so that the transition is smooth. And the transition is one of pride, that they're ready to get to that next level. So that's something that we're working on, and I'm working closely, I worked closely last summer with some of our coaches, some of our lead coaches, and we'll be following that again this summer, putting some things in place, to lay it out, to lay some expectations out for all of our coaches, that this alignment continues. Something that I'm really excited about is continuing to try to expand our intramural program. And one thing I'd like to mention on that, I got together with our, this school year, earlier in the year, I got together with our varsity field hockey coach, and if you might remember, the last two years, we haven't had a modified field hockey team. And I said, you know, let's offer a couple of clinics, let's offer some intramural programs, we'll find some space, and we did that, and we made the time work, we put out a survey, we collected some information, and we offered two clinics this year for field hockey. Well, this September, we will offer a modified field hockey team again, and as of right now, we have sixteen participants that are ready to...
That's great.
And I'm really excited about that, and how it unfolded through those intramural offerings. We did another one for ice hockey, because we're trying to bring back our modified ice hockey program. And so we, just on the phone today, trying to put plans in place for a third clinic, for a junior clinic for the ice hockey team, which I really think could help in the same capacity as it did for field hockey. So really excited for the girls to have the opportunity this fall to play on a team here again in the district, and to keep that program going. So that's one example of that. The athletic placement process that we, I was here last year, and we talked about a change that we were going to implement, and I'm extremely proud of the way that it was implemented. We were able to bring several middle-school athletes up to a couple of JV teams, that actually allowed those teams to continue to play, one of them being the junior varsity girls basketball team, which had a successful season. It was just a success story that everyone is proud of, and I thank you again for your support in that, and to Dr. Lamia for your guidance on through the process, how we, you know, fought that through, and then we put up a draft, and we went to revisit it, and it worked, and it worked, and it helped our boys lacrosse program as well. And I think where it is right now, we're in a good place, and I'll continue to evaluate that athletic placement process into this school year, this coming school year as well.
Well, we appreciate the way in which you unfolded that policy, and communicated to the community, and it was clear, and it was well-received, so we thank you for that. I guess when you look at the sports overall, and in some cases, and you've done this wisely, you need to partner up with other districts in order to make sure we can still build a team, and give kids the opportunity to play these sports that we may not be able to, you know, have enough players to have our own team. Any potential changes to the lineup in terms of the mix of sports, any other thoughts in terms of new sports, whether crew or squash, right, or any, anything like that, or do you think that we have the right set of opportunities now, in terms of what our kids are looking for, and based on our population?
Well, it's funny, one, something that we experimented with in the late, I forget when did we did it, it was late, early spring, we put out something for squash, and we didn't get much of a response, but one of our coaches also is a squash coach, and he said, and he also coaches field hockey, so he said, hey, this worked for field hockey, let's try it for squash. I said, hey, I'm all about trying something new, but we have to have the student interest first. I mean, that's the first driver, the student interest. So I said, you know what, I'm willing to try it again, we can revisit that, and we'll see where it gets us, and maybe we just have to approach it a different way. So we plan on going back to the drawing board in August, we have a date set to try to think that through again, and to see if it's something that can materialize. Because it came up in conversation a few times, and then we thought we would follow through for some of the students. So I'm glad you asked that question.
Well, we really appreciate the community feel you brought to this program. I saw there were a lot of high school teams that reached out to want this, and to put it in, and brought these kids in for clinics, and it really creates a very nice community. Aside from that, even at the pep rallies, at the homecoming, you're always present. I mean, we really appreciate, you know, it's become a true Byram Hills community. And I didn't know I was always about the sports, but I feel like everyone in the town, there's more of a buzz since you've come along.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And really, back to the top bullet, it's about that touch, right? I believe it's about that touch where the high school students reach out, and they touch that younger program.
Because they see the kids in town, and the kids are high-fiving them, and they want to be like them, they want to get involved.
I believe that, and that was important for me when I was a young athlete, and I think that stands true today. So it's something that I really want to follow up with, and I think that will stay with me and stay with this program. And the last part of my vision there, not really the last part, but my last bullet on this slide, is facility improvements. And as you can, you probably drive by it every day, you see a portion of our, a portion of our facilities is an upgrade, and I thank Kelly for his work and his time, working with myself and Steve Thompson, our Director of Facilities. There's a lot of, a lot of meetings that take place around the turf, and a turf field and a track project.
Colors.
And it's, they're all good, they're all good, we get together to the table to really make this work out, and I feel really good about this project.
With the timing for that?
The timing, the timing is next week, right? We're finished...
You should make some...
We're actually right on schedule, we're on schedule, and we hope to have, the goal is to have the project finished by mid-August.
Is that in time for the sports that come there?
We start August nineteenth is when we start.
Okay, so...
So that's our, you know, our fingers crossed, and hopefully the weather cooperates, and, you know, everything else cooperates with us, and the ground cooperates with us, and what we find down there, so...
What's the first sport that starts using that field?
August nineteenth, we were scheduled for field hockey, girls soccer, boys soccer, and football.
It's a pretty busy time.
So it's our busiest time.
Yes.
It's our busiest time. And that is...
What are you gonna do this time?
We have a backup plan.
They're gonna go to Lori's backyard.
We have a backup plan. We have a backup plan with space reserved in the area close by the school, and the coaches have been great. I've had some meetings with some of our JV and varsity coaches, and they've been fantastic, understanding that we might have to be a little flexible come the beginning of the season, and so we do have a backup plan in place. And I thought that was my last slide, how could I forget this? Community service, once again, which really wraps around our program, you know, the majority of our teams are really, are taking a big step in community service, and what they're doing, and how the students come up with the ideas for their community service projects, it's just uplifting, and it's reassuring that we are, we are taking the right steps, and, you know, the amount of money that we generate, not just the money, but really the caring and the education that comes out of the community service, and just the altruistic mindset, that I'm proud of our athletes, and I'm proud of our coaches for embracing that, and for our community for standing behind it.
Who does they do, to raise that much money?
Well, we have, we have programs like Pink the Rink, is one, that's a big fundraiser. There is cancer awareness programs that the different teams take part in at different games. We've raised money for some money to the baseballs.
Alzheimer's, Winter Warrior's.
Alzheimer's, and prostate cancer, and breast cancer. Different games, where they'll ask for donations prior to a game, get sponsors, sorry, that's the word I was looking for, sponsors.
That's a long one.
Yeah, so there's different ways that they do it, and it's just, it's impressive how it just keeps going.
I don't think that's, is that this year?
That was this year, that was this school year.
Incredible, incredible. Not to mention the food pantry and all the other community service pieces that were done that you can't put a monetary amount on.
Yeah, several, several large donations to food pantries from several teams, and they did, you know, cycle-a-thons where they spend to raise money. So there's, the kids are creative, the student athletes, and we appreciate everything they do, and the coaches for embracing it.
So these are, it started by the students, or is it the coaches that come up with these ideas, or these charities?
It's a mixture there. So I, when I present this to the coaches, I really would like to talk to the students and have them come up with some ideas, and if not, then we help nurture it along, and then, and then feed that, and then the students usually take it from there. That's the majority of how they, how they take place. Some teams, right from the start, the students, before we could even mention it, the students come to us.
Wow, okay.
We had a few, we had a few teams this year where the students just came directly to the coach, and already had the team's support to do some fundraising, and I thought that was awesome. I was really happy to hear about that, yeah.
And they partner with things in the community?
It could be our community.
Do they partner with, like, do they partner with Equinox?
It could be with the gym, it's, or with just, you know, the Cancer Society itself, that organization. But it's successful, and I really believe in it, that it helps us all grow, and we all learn from that.
Well, you know what I love about this, is that a lot of the school districts have a requirement that there's community service, you have to go in certain hours, we don't have that. So this is happening because they want to do it, not because they have to fulfill a requirement that the schools are requiring, so it's pretty incredible.
It's much different than sending kids around to have something signed that they did X number of hours.
Right.
Which we've all probably experienced.
It's a great team-building exercise, too, for the teams, because they're collaborating around something other than sports also, so it's really a great outcome.
Altruism.
Right, and I think that they're, you know, one of my favorite words, altruism. Whenever we can tie that in to our program, it's just really going to make it that much better. I believe that. So that's what I have for you tonight. Thank you for letting me present this and have this time to share with you, and...
Rob, let me conclude by saying, this has been a phenomenal year in athletics, you have done an amazing job, and you leave things on the table that you don't even talk about, like the weeks that you spent for that homecoming week, and the spring week, and the supporting the work that's happening on the field with neighbors and the community, like, all of that other stuff that you're doing, that, you know, athletic advisory, all of the other stuff that you do that doesn't even make it here tonight, that is very much a part of that job, but you've had an unbelievable year.
Thank you.
How many years now, Rob?
This is four.
You're a bobcat.
Take it off.
Thank you.
Get the tattoo in.
Can I imagine?
The tattoos are gonna be structured.
That is good to hear.
Drive safely, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, well done.
All right, so we are actually gonna move to do Policy 7500 next, which is Item 11.3, Naming Facilities, Funds, and Events, and then we'll go back to where we left off with school counseling after that.
Because we're not letting Robin off the board for that one.
That's number one. And Mike needs to leave, and so just before he leaves, we can have this discussion. So I could just give a quick recap of the last discussion we had, and sort of the different options, and I opened it up to have dialogue about it, but this is a continuation of the discussion that we had around the naming of facilities, of different programs, and we had at the beginning of a discussion, and we'll continue it tonight, around sort of different options of how to move forward. One option is that we keep the existing policy as it stands, and the policy was worked on at some point earlier in the year, and so we have put some thought into it, and that's one road we can go down. The second option is to take the policy right now, and potentially change the language in it, which will be up to the policy committee to decide on the exact language, bring it back to the board for evaluation and a potential vote, and that language could be tweaked to make it, make a higher threshold upon which a naming would happen. So rather than the way that it reads now, just making the language tighter, putting a higher standard on it. Third option is to change the policy and prohibit the naming going forward of any buildings or programs. And then the fourth option is to do that, and then in addition to that, look at the historical namings that exist today in the district, and potentially delete them, and, you know, that would take a vote, and that would be something that, it could be done tonight, it could be done at a future meeting, it really just depends on the discussion. So those are the four options, and I guess with that as a backdrop, I would really just open it up, and everybody can chime in on their thoughts, and then to the extent that we have, if we have a clear consensus that moves this one way or the other, then we kind of know our next steps. If we don't, this is an item that we can continue to discuss and debate, and I kind of open it up for...
I think I made my position fairly clear over the last couple of board meetings. The reasons that, I don't think I need to belabor, I believe we shouldn't be in the naming business. I would favor taking the names away from the programs, with all due respect to those who have been named in the past, I don't think we need a Varley player, I don't think we need a Galeno athletic event, a Galeno relay, I think is what it is. I think there are other ways to honor people, and I think all we're gonna, all we can do is get ourselves in trouble. It's always, it's all we can do is get ourselves in trouble by naming, or keeping names on. It's a different world we live in now, and I think the naming of even this building, as good a man as Dr. McGuire is, and was, I think was, I thought was precipitous, it was before I came on the board, actually, and I just don't think any board policy or any board goal is enhanced by naming events after people, especially when these naming events come so many years down the road, when there's really no opportunity to do any fair vetting about what it is, other than the anecdote we remember, and says a very well-meaning graduates of years ago who only remember certain things, and I just think it's a business we need not be in. And I don't, I wouldn't be in favor of sending it back to the policy committee, because my view is, is that we just shouldn't be naming. Period. And I think this gives us an opportunity to stay, to get out of and stay out of trouble. And I think this gives us an opportunity to stay, to get out of and stay out of trouble in this area. It may be a harsh result. And it may be a result that you may say, gee, can't there be a compromise? But I'm not so sure compromise is what we should be doing with a policy like this and with ultimately the results that this can engender for the board and for the school district. That's my view.
So you're, just so I understand your view, it's to strip the names from everything that's been named to the state?
Yes.
Every building and every program?
Yes, with, perhaps the exception of Crittenen for, for reasons I would be happy to discuss in executive session. But other than that, yeah, I would. I would. I think it's, yeah. So you still...
No, go ahead. No, go ahead.
You'd still have to go back, you'd have to change the policy. So I thought you would also mention that you wouldn't go back to the, you don't want it to go back where you should be added.
I don't mean we shouldn't have any, there should be no policy. There's no reason to have, there's no reason to have criteria. We're just not naming anymore. We're just not going to be naming. There's no need to worry about whether the bar is too high, whether the bar is too low, whether the superintendent is going to get it right or wrong, whoever the superintendent may be when this comes up.
Well, you would have to go back.
Well, you could simply revoke the policy and put a new policy in place saying we're not going to do it. But we could have, we could have, you know, we have our halls of fame. We have a lot of other ways to honor people, just not this way.
So my view is that our boards have put tremendous effort, just like our board has put in tremendous effort into this policy. And it's not fair for me personally to get into somebody else's head that puts so much time and effort into naming something and honoring what they felt was really important. So I'm more in favor of going back to the policy committee and making the language more stringent. But I'm not really in favor of stripping names because I think they were put there by very well-meaning boards. And I think, I can't go back in time and know exactly what they were thinking. But I have to believe if they put half the amount of effort that we put into this policy, that they were incredibly well-meaning.
I was gonna say, if it's okay, no disrespect. I want to hear what everybody says before we go back and forth.
Yeah, that makes sense. That makes sense. I like that idea.
Are we going in order?
Mike?
Yes, well, leaves come to go on.
I have a, I have a, just a different view on this. Just to the extent that I think it's, and I mentioned this in another meeting, that it's kind of an American concept to be naming things after people. And I don't, I don't, you know, I think it's a special way to recognize someone. And I think some people take that's, it's very meaningful. I do think that the policy's got an affirmative vote. It's pretty restrictive. I think it's difficult to go back and strip names. I concur. You know, I concur with the concept that, of how you felt about it. We don't know what went on in the past with respect to the full thought process around that. That being said, I thought you said something, Ira, that was very interesting tonight. It is, it doesn't really help us educate our kids any better. And I think the focus of our board is, is to support the district and our children. And, you know, maybe, maybe this business has nothing to do with that. And that really struck a chord with me. So I'm, I'm really, I have a bit of a thought process here, but I'm not quite sure how I feel about it. And that's unfortunately where I am right this particular moment.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, after sitting through these meetings like we'll get tonight with all the longevity and the Teacher of the Year recipients, I mean, you see how many incredible people gone through this district. So I'm not in favor of naming because I don't like to stop time. I think we're a public school district, and I don't think it's our place to stop time, you know, and name something after somebody. There are so many great contributions. But having said that, I also don't feel that it's our place to go back and erase what other boards, other administrators, community have spent their time and care and thought in naming. I think it's a slippery slope to start taking things off. Unless there is a specific reason with proof that we need to, I would just assume tighten our policy and not be in the naming business. I was thinking, worrying, you know, something along the lines of the board recognizes that it is not in the best interest of the present and future school district community to attach individuals or organizations named to facilities and perpetuity. So I was thinking something along that line, strengthening our policy to make it, you know, that hopefully future boards won't go into naming something. But I really prefer that we don't start stripping buildings and programs and everything else.
I am in favor of number four.
I'm sorry.
I'm in favor of proposal number four.
Oh, got it. Yep.
That we should not be in the naming business. We're a public school district, and that's not our job. But, and that we do have plenty of other ways to honor people, that these people certainly deserve to be honored. And we, and we do have ways of doing that, but naming programs and buildings shouldn't be one of them. I, I do think that if that is the direction we're going to take and we're going to change the policy, that we should be stripping the names from. I agree, Crittenen, logistically, is just a little, a little different. But I think the names should be stripped from the other things. I think it opens a can of worms. We don't know what's going to happen 20 years from now and what's going to come out in the news and out of the woodwork about people. And we have no control over that. And rather than be in a situation where we're backpedaling and trying to unnamed something that's been named, we should just change the policy and not be in the naming business. In terms of what Lori and Mike and Robin have said in terms of undoing what previous boards have perhaps, have certain, most certainly, not perhaps, most certainly, very thoughtfully, decisions that they very thoughtfully made, I think that's part of our job. We could say that about anything. We could say that about any decision we make, that we're changing decisions that previous boards have made. So I don't see that this decision, particular decision, as any different from any other decision that we make in that regard. Same thing will be true in, in 10 years if the next board at that time decides that this policy is not, is not the direction that we could go in. They could make the decision to undo this policy and change it and start naming buildings again. But at this time, I, I think that that is the direction that I think we should go in.
So as I think about this issue, I think that for me personally, if we were presented with an opportunity to name something today, my, the threshold would have to be very high for me to be comfortable with it. I think it really should be reserved for, you know, very specific and a small set of circumstances. Maybe some of which I can't even envision right now. But I do think that, I think two things I feel. One is that the history is the history. And I'm not sure I'm any better placed than any former board member to reverse a decision on this matter that's been made, unless there were a specific set of facts and circumstances that led me to a reason why something needs to be changed. So I really think from a historical perspective that, you know, I would not be in favor of stripping names. As far as the policy going forward and what the policy, how the policy rates at reach right now, I think, I think the policy is pretty stringent. I mean, we have, it's one of the only things where we have more than four votes, and the language does read that this is not an everyday occurrence. I would be completely open to the language becoming tighter. We can say the most extraordinary of circumstances. We can add, you know, language that Robin suggested. I mean, I think that's something that I'd certainly be happy for the policy committee to think about and bring back. But I, but I think that's where I draw the line. And I, I just think it's very difficult to know if we put a prohibition going forward, like what's going to happen? I'm not saying I'd be in favor of this or not in favor of this, but I pose the question that if we're in a deep recession and we have a serious issue where we have to cut programs because we can't raise the tax levy, and someone comes along and generously says, here's $2.5 million bucks to keep your program. Like, I'm not saying we should say yes or no, but I would certainly want to consider it. Because that, yeah, because...
In a public school district, you'd consider that?
Potentially. I mean, it's a hypothetical situation. But I mean, if we were just faced with cutting a program, like cutting athletics or taking, like, I think we'd have to discuss it. I think it'd be an important discussion. So I just think that there are things that could happen that we just don't know about. And I just don't, I just feel like if, every board can make their own decision on this matter.
I'd like to add to that, to one piece of that. I think it's a fiduciary responsibility from a fiscal standpoint that to the taxpayer, that if the donation was, say, tied to a naming, if that's what you were alluding to, I think we would almost, by turning that away, we're, we're potentially not maintaining the fiscal responsibility to the district.
Suppose Coca-Cola comes along and says, have your kids have Coca-Cola patches on the uniform? We'll give you $3 million.
Where are you gonna draw the line with that?
We could say, no, I'm not saying, there's nothing we have to decide.
Honestly, honestly, I think that's a pretty far-fetched situation. And that's not a situation I believe we should be grounding decisions on. That really is down the road, way down the road. But I want to call the board's attention to something. And it's a great discussion because it's a really interesting topic. But I don't believe that either the Varley players or the Galeno relay was ever approved by the board. I, I think those were two events just for hand saying, this is what we're gonna call from now on. And so there's no reason to give any deference to something like that. You know, it was just a way to call the Varley players. Well, that's nice. That should have been approved by the Board of Education. And it never was. It just happened to be the Varley players one year. And this is no, it's just the way the process worked. And the same thing with the track thing. And frankly, I understand the sensitivity towards not wanting to maybe undo. But I would doubt very strongly that the boards that did whatever they did, and if you take away Galeno and Varley, I mean, I guess you had science research and one or two other things. I'm not even sure that was, that even passed a board vote, just a given. I would strongly doubt that any board thought about the issues that we have to think about vis-à-vis naming. I don't think those issues were even in the remotest recesses of a board's thought process saying, well, what if we learned down the road about X?
I disagree.
I don't think so.
People always thought, I mean, in these, I mean, this has been, by the way, in a, in a, in a private institution, this is a big discussion that comes up all the time on naming something.
You think the school would thought about, would think about that before doing it? Or what, you think they'd vet? Not, well, maybe. I don't think so. But I, now that I have a chance to really think about it, it's, I don't think, with the exception of, we have a school, we have a building. I'm not sure the other things that we're talking about were ever, really ever even endorsed by the school board by the board. So I don't think we have any deference to that.
But I guess what's the strong reason we would be stripping them now is, you know, in the past? What would be the reason? Is there an educational reason? Is there a direction of the district reason? Like, you know, my feeling is, you know, again, you know, maybe they weren't, we don't know how well these were thought through, but we have to assume that they were, for whatever reason, the community or the school district or the board decided they wanted to name these things that. So, you know, my feeling is, you know, for us to start stripping away this stuff because I, I just don't feel like we have a great reason of why we do that. I get why moving forward, unless there was something that came out on a specific person, you know, that, that we had to, but...
Provable.
That's provable. But right now, we don't. So I feel like we're getting into an area that's a slippery slope. I just...
The best way is not to have a slope.
But then, you know, how do you say that? Not Crittenen, if you're saying...
Yeah, I think that, I don't know if I follow the logic of not Crittenen.
I don't either. So, you know, I'm just saying, I, I don't think we have a good enough reason to take this stuff on.
I think the logistics of undoing Crittenen are so significant.
The people's families, you know, who these people, who these programs were named after, I mean, you have to think about that, too.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? There's families, there's members that...
No, no, I don't think we do, frankly. I don't think we owe that. I think we're here to execute the vision of the school district. And the vision of the school district does not mean any, frankly, it may sound harsh, but I'm not concerned about how this impacts family members of those who the events are named after. No, I don't think that's a consideration for me.
But we're here for the students. We are here for the students and the community.
Yes, well, tell me how this...
And the students have pride because of the Varley players. These people in the theater program and the track.
I think they would have just as much pride in the Byer Mills players, the Byer, I think they had just as much pride with the name, with the school name attached to it as any person's name, they know, who know who that person is. It's just a bunch of letters put together in front of it.
If we don't strip the names, every single time this comes up, there's going to be, this whole discussion is going to happen again where they're going to say, but we have the Varley players and the da-da-da-da.
But that wasn't this board. We can always come back and say, after, that was before this policy was tightened up. Once the policy is tightened up, it's, it's a very high bar to jump over.
Yeah.
And once entitled to their own opinion.
And at the end of the day, like, we, we can, at least this board as it's constituted, it'll soon change, but it could make the, I mean, we, we don't have to approve any naming. I mean, for years, right? We don't have to add necessarily to the complexity of this issue. Because like, look, it is, it is a complex issue, and there are a lot of considerations. There's no doubt about it.
But I don't see why we want to keep the names and programs in place that A, weren't passed by the board. To begin with, and B, serve no purpose. I mean, I know it's a nice thing to do and it honors good people, but we can honor people many different ways, many different ways people can get honored. Sorry. And it's clear at the moment, we don't have a consensus.
Right.
I, I count two for option four. Robin is somewhere between two and three. I think if I read it correctly. Lori's closer to one and two. You're closer to one and two.
Yeah, fair enough. Two is fine.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. It just doesn't seem to be a consensus moving forward.
And I guess I would just add, and I don't want to speak for her because she's not here, but I did have a brief conversation with Lauren. I asked her if I can represent at least what she's thinking. And she did say option two, which is go back to the policy committee.
She told me she's in favor of stripping everything. No, no.
Ask her what for the meeting.
But, you know...
I'm leaning towards two.
I really...
Two being go back to the policy committee?
What was three again?
Three was prohibit in the future, which we'd have to go back to policy committee. But prohibit in the future, like prohibition, but we're not changing the past.
It's two and three to me is kicking the can, it's kicking the can down the road. Which, I mean, you want to kick it down the road, kick it down the road. But then we don't have to do anything. You know, we can always, we can always start sending it to the policy.
I just, honestly, I don't hear a real compelling reason to strip. I really don't. Everything that you guys are saying, I get it, but I don't...
Because you don't, well, because we, I think by going through naming, you are opening yourself up to potential exposure because you don't know what other people know about whomever the things are named after.
I get it. So moving forward, I wouldn't do it.
But you don't know about anything about the people who are named after.
But if they came up and we had something that was...
It was never vetted, Robin. Nothing like this was ever vetted. It was an honor being given to very, very good people who served the district very well, but there was no vetting being done. That's my problem. And I don't see why we should perpetuate this mistake, not that these people shouldn't be honored, but honored in this way when there was no vetting and the issues never even came before the Board of Education. I see, as a lawyer, I see there's no presidential reason to stay with it when we know what the potential downside is can be very difficult for a Board of Education.
Was the board, did the board vote on this?
I would like to add, yeah, the board, the board, I remember this from my predecessors. The board definitely knew that the recommendation was to name something after someone, like Varley players or the Michaelino run. Everyone neglected to realize there was a policy. I don't even know if it was board-approved. I, I'm assuming no, based on what you're saying.
You didn't vote on it.
But I definitely knew that the board was told.
Yeah.
So it wasn't that something happened and the board never knew. The board definitely knew, but there was, I believe, no vote.
I agree with you on that, absolutely, but it wasn't being focused on. You know, this was, and who wanted to stand up there and say, oh, I don't want to name this after Joey Varley or Michaelino?
I know, but I mean, but the board could have, I mean, sure.
We could have, but now we know more. And now we have a vetting process in place we didn't have then. So I don't know why, as a, talk about a custodian of the district as we are. I can't support exposing the district, which is I think what we're doing by not moving in towards, towards the number four scenario, if that's what you want to call it. I think it's exposing the district. I don't think that, and that's my concern, that's my fiduciary concern, is not exposing the district. And I don't see why we need to do it. I don't see why we need to perpetuate the naming. I don't see what is gained. I don't think the students act any better or run any faster. It's just not what the school district, public school district should ban. I've said my piece, I'm not convincing all of you at the moment, so, but we don't have a consensus here. And I'm sorry, Robin, because I'd like to resolve it while you're still on the board, I really would, but we don't have a consensus.
But all right, you're saying just the programs that the board of ed didn't vote on? Because we don't know, well, we don't know if they voted on HCC and we don't know if they voted on
I think, I don't know if they did, that was even before my time. But I do know that none of the current, that neither the Galeno nor the Varley entities were voted. There was no vetting. There was simply a proposal saying, this is what we're going to do, and everybody said, do it.
This building was voted on, right?
What?
This building was voted on?
McGuire, was McGuire voted on?
I remember, I don't remember it being voted on, but I think it was because I remember a prior board
I thought you said there was a dissenting vote.
A prior board member, there was a dissent about it. So it seems to me that they thought it was such a big enough step, I guess they called it an action item. But that was 20 years between when the next things came up. And, you know, if you remember just what we went through with the Bissell event. We had fantastic arguments for this guy. This guy, you know, sounded just fabulous. It's too long ago, we don't know. We want, and we can honor people in different ways. And so I think what we do is get out of the naming business and honor people the way they should be honored by a public school district. We just not to name things like that after them. And it's so, it's safe, it has the, it has the advantage of being not susceptible to interpretation and it doesn't expose this stuff. That's my view, but I feel pretty strongly about it, actually.
Just like, I just feel like, you know, certainly with buildings where it's something is permanent, you know, more permanent. I feel like with the programs, I have no problem if there is an issue and it's proven, it's strip the program. The name of the program, it's a program, it's not a building. But to strip it now, you know, after we've honored these people and, and those were not that long ago, so
So at what point would you strip the name from a program? Do you strip it based on public outcry?
No.
No.
Of course, it comes to wishful.
No, no, that's what I'm saying.
And the person has to be able to defend themselves.
Right. And if they're not, if they're dead and they can't prove, they can't defend themselves and nothing can be proven, so it's going to be this public
I guess you have to, you know, it's not a public thing, it's up to the board, but I guess, you know, you take that as it comes and then
I think on this issue, the board should be as conservative as possible and take the steps necessary to expose this as little as possible. In this day and age, I don't know why a board wouldn't want to do anything else. I understand it may cause some discomfort for people in the general Byer community, but we're elected to make these decisions. This is part of our job, is to act in the best interest of the board, not in the best interest of the families or the best interest of, what's the best interest of the school district? And I think it's hard pressed to say the best interest of the school district is not to eliminate exposures. And it's a potential exposure. It's no less, it's no less an exposure than I believe your far-fetched argument about, um, I'm sorry, the, I'm sorry, Scott, the issue about selling, selling naming rights or whatever, which down the road, if we really hit such a financial crunch, maybe at some point somebody will look at it.
Yeah, and I'm not saying tomorrow that I would vote to do that, but I just, my point is hard to know what's coming down the pike. And I think that it takes five votes now, so there is a high threshold, higher than passing a $95 billion budget to make this decision. At the end of the day, the budget is going to be more impactful and have more exposure to our students' education than these naming issues.
Well, that also, that also only goes to the community to vote. We, that budget's put up for the community to say, yeah, you can.
Yes, but we have to figure out, we have to
But we recommend it, but that's not, that's not what this issue is.
Of course, but the, but the, but the point, but we have to recommend it and we ultimately put it on the ballot. And so, and there aren't five votes to that, so I think the threshold is, I agree with you wholeheartedly that, again, if somebody came before us tomorrow with a naming idea, like my threshold for saying yes would be just incredibly high. It probably would have been five years ago too, though, I'm not sure, I don't think it would be any different than it was. But I think we do, we do need consensus if we're going to strip names off of buildings and it doesn't sound like we have that. This could be an ongoing discussion, this doesn't have to, you know.
I think we'll exhaust ourselves soon on this, but I think, given the fact that our board member elect me, I want to participate in this, since we don't have consensus, we should put it forward on the agenda and hear what Jason has to say about it, whether we listen to him or not or something else.
And there's at least some semblance of sort of a, I wouldn't say necessarily consensus, but there are enough of us that are saying, at least it's worth taking a look at the policy again, that that could also be a way to know, even though obviously it doesn't get to the historical issues.
I'm happy to look at the policy, but you know how my policy would be.
No, understood, but I, but I think that for that number two option, there could be a consensus potentially for number two, so.
Not with me.
Okay, well, that's fair.
It won't be across the whole board, but, you know, at some point, and it doesn't have to be this meeting, it could be the next meeting or after that, but at some point the board is going to have to vote, you know, where you're standing on it. Because if we're not, it sounds like we're not, I mean, we're at all, answer this, we're not going to all be in agreement, but at some point, there has to be the majority and the board
I think, I think the question should be called to discuss, to decide what we want to do. We should have a full board present. Unfortunately, the good Robin will not be with us to vote, but I think the early part of next year, we should put this back on the agenda with an aim of at least putting motions, getting motions on the table and seeing where they go.
Yeah.
We have to bring this to conclusion, we can't have this lingering for a year, that doesn't make sense either.
Can you just clarify your feelings on this for you? You sounded to me like you were more in favor of option three than two, but Scott seemed to feel that you were more in favor of option two. So option two is being more stringent in the policy.
Oh, yeah, I'm totally up to two.
But option three is changing the policy going forward to say no naming.
Changing the policy to be more stringent and I, I don't, no, it's okay, no, let me clarify. No, I'm not saying that we cannot, I, I'm in favor of changing the policy to make it more stringent. I'm not saying that we cannot, because I just, I don't think that's going to hold water, because if something else comes up, the board will just change policy. So I, I think that that's a new point, but I would like to strengthen the language of it so that if the public is looking at our policy or if boards are trying to decide they're going back to policy, they see stringent and wish, that would be mine.
Right, so the reason that I said that maybe that's one that we sort of kind of have consensus, and Lara's not here unfortunately, but if, after hearing this discussion, to be fair, she may change her mind, but if she continues to hold her initial view, between, there's sort of four of us that are saying option two, Mike was maybe somewhere in between option one, keep it as is, and maybe
I heard him meaning a little bit the other way based on, I thought I was convincing him a little bit, but I love to speak, I love to speak. Well, I did, I thought, I thought I heard him say that.
I think this is one way that we don't want to speak for anybody.
I'm absolutely not going to speak for anybody.
You're right, because, yeah.
Yeah, I'm in enough trouble with him all the time, I don't disagree.
This was a very healthy discussion.
Yeah, no, I think it, I think it is.
Do you have your thinking to do over the summer?
Yeah, okay. So why don't we come back to this one more time at some point in the fall, when the agenda kind of allows for it? And then we can have the benefit of our new board member and his opinion, and then we can kind of go around again. Look, at the end of the day, if we don't have consensus on it, then we stick with the existing policy, right?
Right, it's our own policy.
Right.
Can I put it on the agenda for probably the end of September so that the new board member has some time to like get other board business underway?
Makes total sense, yeah, I think that makes
End of September or last November.
I mean, the lucky thing for us is that it's not, I think, pressing right now, right? There's nothing pressing about it, but
No, but
Yeah, and I come back to with the policy, I mean, it's a different story to discuss the historical names, I mean, that's a serious discussion. But with the policy, there are so many policies we have that govern other constituents, whether it's teachers, administrators, parents, volunteers, kids, right? And at the end of the day, this is one that really involves us and future boards. And so whether we have this language or that language, even whether if we prohibit it, at the end of the day, some other board can come along and they can, you know, change it. And it's their, it's the board's governance responsibility. So in a way, I think this policy might be like a little bit less critical as a policy versus some others.
Exactly.
Where we're governing other people's, you know, rules and regulations.
We've been talking about this policy for over a year, two years.
And I really think that there are a lot of things that have serious impact on our student
Yeah, it's interesting, though, I think that a balance has to happen between having enough time to think about this, to process it, to hear people's viewpoints, to think about how you feel about it, and also understanding that a public is watching this and that there are people who are concerned or waiting or wondering, like, you know, so there, it's a delicate balance between those two things. I think it is great to have had this conversation and to come back to it again sometime in September or October, to have time to process what everybody is thinking about it, to see how timely these thoughts feel a few months from now. I mean, you know, you could go back to something a few months later and look at it through a different lens and, yeah.
Always sleep on it.
Yes.
Sleep on it for a few months.
To not make rash decisions, right.
Guidance.
All right.
Guidance, follow that.
So we have before us the guidance plan, which is aligned to new regulations. So I did a summary presentation of what the new guidance regulations included at the March meeting, which I included in your packet for review. There were four key areas that were changing in the new regulations, so I just want to briefly summarize that. I'll talk about the plan and then you will approve or not the plan, the plan to accept it.
But don't keep it until October.
But don't keep it until October, now we have to get this rolling.
This has to be out.
So first is that we have to develop a comprehensive kindergarten through 12th grade school counseling or guidance plan, which means all students in the district need to have access to a school counselor, and that's new, it was only six through 12 in the past. And now the regulations are extending down through the elementary grades. Also, a second piece of the changes is that we have to develop with students career and academic plans from sixth through 12th grade. And the plans seem to reflect students' academic progress and their career plans. The third piece is that we have to develop a comprehensive plan, and also that plan needs to be updated annually and be presented to the board annually. And then finally, there needs to, we need to establish an advisory council, and that would be comprised of representative stakeholders that we'll decide upon. Those are the main key changes to the regulations. And in this plan, Mike McGrath, in his, the way he studies and plans things, he started working on this two years ago and I first sent him an email saying, there's something coming from the state on some changes. He's been, he's been following these regulations for the past two years. And this plan has been in the works, them actually writing this plan for the past year, once the regulations were released last summer. And included in these plans, Mike lists the regulations. He also lists the focus on both the academic program and the social-emotional learning needs of students being a priority. He also outlines the standards that the guidance plan will be aligned to, which includes students' mindsets, the way they think about learning and their emotional state, learning strategies, their self-management skills, social skills, and the career development standards are listed. And then Mike lists in this plan four goals, four concrete goals, that go back to those students' standards, and he aligns them to the standards. And he includes objectives for each of those goals, how he will accomplish those, the resources needed, and ways he'll evaluate success toward those goals. Mike is really methodical, and I think this plan shows his methodical approach that he put together in collaboration with his guidance counselors in sixth through 12th grade. It was overseen also by the principals. So I think this was a really great beginning for a plan. This would come to the advisory council, that would review these goals, evaluate it, they could make recommendations to the changes as the regulations allow that advisory committee to make recommendations for revisions to the plan. I think this really sets the ball moving forward for us to first just be aligned to the regulations, but also to really have a comprehensive plan district-wide that aligns with what are the goals of the school counseling program and making sure that it meets the district needs all across the system, both supporting students academically, supporting those who might be struggling academically, and also the social-emotional learning needs of the students. So I think it's a really thorough plan and I'm really proud of this, I think it's very detailed. The board has any questions on the plan?
Oh, my, what's, there's a new committee for liaison role for the board that
It will be, right, new liaison, because we would, stakeholders I believe I talked about in March, we want to include the guidance chair, a board member, administrators would be involved, counselors, school psychologies, psychologists, faculty members, parents, and students being part of that committee.
Would it be a board member per school or a board member per?
One for the, because it's just one committee, it's one committee. So it would just be one for that.
And that committee pretty much is meeting to talk about what the goals are and then listening to how those goals may have been accomplished by the end of the year. And then sort of providing some advisement and
Going forward in terms of tweaking the plan and setting new goals each year.
But the advisory committee is required by law, I remember, if a board member on there, it's just, I think we
That would be what we think, so
We wanted to do that.
Right, yeah, the, the regulations do not stipulate who it should be, it just says representative stakeholders. And I think as a district, we usually have members, administrators, teachers, parents, and we like to start including students on our committees. Great. I think we have to vote, I think.
Is it, can I do it?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Oh, okay.
An action.
It's an action.
Anybody else, seven eight? All right. Then I would ask for a motion to accept the school counseling guidance plan for grades K through 12, item 10.2. All in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. I think the guidance counseling team, including Mike McGrath and all the counselors who work on this.
Yes.
Next we go to the safety emergency plan, which we don't have to vote on yet, but we
We, right.
We have a time to review.
We, this is now the sort of public notice. The previous plan was adopted last in 2016, and this is actually a revised plan. What the regulations say is that for the annual adoption, we have to have a 30-day comment period prior to the adoption by the Board of Education. So by presenting it publicly tonight and having it made publicly available, Gina, what is the date, it would be the August?
27th meeting, and then we would put that up on our site and submit it to the state by September 1st.
So during that 30-day period, Gina will convene the, you could probably tell it better than I can.
Safety team, just to review this plan, identify certain parts of the plan that have been updated to reflect the components of the regulations. And also to just make sure that there's, you know, if there's any questions, there's also potentially, it could be a student that's on that team as well, as well as the parent. One of you will join that team as well, just to ensure that we're all in the same page.
And those are board appointments that happen in the reorg. So we would need to really know which board member is going to take on that duty of going to that meeting and looking at this document to see the changes so that
Can we say that it was always going to be the president or is that the case?
Oh, I think we did.
We did say.
We did say that, yeah. We did, and that makes sense.
It does make sense.
Yeah. So it will be the president, the president is declared at the reorg.
Okay.
Right, it's great. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
Just so you know, Gina did countless days of work on this plan. It was not only in collaboration with a group called Altairist, who was giving her guidance on this, but also with Danny Carthy, our security manager, all of the assistant principals. This has taken multiple meetings for people to really review this plan to make sure that it was aligned. So thank you, Gina, it's a lot of work.
And Gina, thank you.
All right, we've got item 10.4. Yeah, we don't have too many of these these days, textbook of the
No, no.
Yeah, American government.
When you first look, you say, why?
That's interesting, so the first one is for the new course that you approved, I believe it was in December. Advanced Placement, U.S. Politics and Government, it's a really great course, we're very excited about it. I'm taking it next year. Yeah, I know, I know.
I'd like to be a guest lecturer.
Okay, I'll note that.
I really would, it's great stuff.
And so this textbook is for an electronic book only, we're looking at just being an ebook for this particular course. And Jen Layden, our social studies chairperson, is recommending just a one-year subscription, a pilot, and they want to make sure that it meets the needs before buying a longer subscription, which is more cost-effective, like a six-year or something to that effect. So this book
Like new rock box.
Yeah, this was, they looked at several books, it's listed in your packet, this one they believe aligns really strongly with the AP materials. The author was very involved in the Advanced Placement work, and it's a very student-friendly book. And this is one of those situations where, I mean, I don't know if you're planning to do this or not, but it'd be interesting after the year to get the student feedback. This is an intense course, ton of reading, right? If they thought that that online-only version was awesome, or whether they missed the textbook, it'd be just interesting to know, right? Just in the future. I'll make a note of that. And I also just noticed we use ebooks, we also use other resources as well, there's other Right.
That book didn't come from Texas, did it?
No, sure we wouldn't. And then the second one is for AP European History, and if you may have caught the note in here that this textbook has been in place for 30 years. So I think it's time that our AP European History, although it may not change that much. There's a lot that happened in Europe in the last 30 years.
30 years ago, we're still, we're still the Soviet Union.
Yeah.
Soviet Union hadn't been dissolved.
Right, right. But the new teacher
I'm sure we have an outdated version.
Maybe he's having other books, so. This is, just getting a book that's, has online materials as well and maybe written in a more current student-friendly manner, 30 years ago. Anybody have any questions? Two books again, were vetted by Jen Layden, our social studies chairperson, with committee members.
This is a print version?
This is a print version, yes.
Well, then they better stop renaming the countries, right? It's much easier to change in electronic.
Right, there are e-materials as well, so they're supplemental electronic materials and online, with most tests and online, with most texts, textbooks.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I ask for a motion to adopt these two textbooks, American Government and the History of Modern Europe.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Onto 10.5, which is an awesome one, which is Byram Hills Education Foundation grant. We are very fortunate to have the Education Foundation asking us to accept a donation of over $76,000 for the Wampus Creative Community Arts Center. Jen wants to say a few words about it.
I just want to talk about what this community, Creative Arts Community Center is about at Wampus, and to thank the BHEF. This is part of our grant cycle, and the, the building at Wampus is going to be completely restructured next year. I talked to the board about this. Peggy McInerney and Dave Mack have recognized that third-grade classrooms are not together in any kind of hub, and they are the students that really would benefit from the smaller sense of community with less independence at third grade. Fifth grade is in more of a learning hub, and that is a class of kids who are much more mature and can handle things like walking a longer distance to their other classes, their specials. So Peggy and Dave are restructuring that to really align with their philosophy of developing this Wampus community. Our art rooms are going to be moved to the multipurpose room, which is the big glass room when you first enter the building in front of you. It is a perfect space for a modern art studio, where it's going to be an indoor and outdoor art studio. There will be an outdoor track decking with seating for a full class out there, which can not only be used for these art classes and all the art programs and exhibitions and everything like that, but as a community center for Wampus. If you think about the setting of Wampus, there is no community spot. There is no main focus, main hub. They don't even have a theater, right? I mean, it's a cafeteria that is doubles as a theater. This is a great community space for every kind of project in every different class. Great exposition place, great community meeting space, great spot to create artwork. And then with the added outdoor component, it is in a courtyard that is actually joined to the cafeteria. So they're not disturbing any of the classrooms that are in that area. There are only a few classrooms, and with a small fence, they will be on the other side of that. So this is a great space for every class to come out, to utilize. It could be coupled with some lunch periods, and at the same token, when art classes are taking place in there, it could be an outdoor art space for kids to be creating their artwork. So it is modern for the sake of art, it is modern for the sake of our concept of community spaces, and fantastic for all programs in the building, and to serve as a hub. So I think it has like 18 really good reasons of why this is happening. So the BHEF moved quickly on this, and we are hoping that this is completed by the time school starts.
So how will this, can't be there over the summer?
They know. We were, I mean, we, we've done this before, where we lock off parts of buildings, they'll have the library, Hump 21, they have plenty of spaces, and we'll be moving classrooms. A lot of the teachers at the end of this week are packing up these rooms so that things are in place in the other rooms before school starts, so. Yep, it's a lot to manage.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's like having, you know, a complete house renovation while you have every room filled with company. We're doing it. So I just wanted to say a special thanks to the BHEF. Jason happens to be here, he's switching his BHEF hat for a Board of Education hat.
He's still technically, I guess, the chair.
Technically still...
For about five more days.
Five more days, he's still the chair.
Yeah.
And has been really spearheading this to make sure that it is meeting the mission of the Byram Hills Education Foundation, which is to support students in our programs in our schools. So this is beyond anything a school could do at this point with our taxes. We can't. There's no way. When I look at all of the developments that we have been able to do thanks to the BHEF, we, where would we be? They started us with this one-to-one Chromebook initiative. Like now, technology is ubiquitous here, and we didn't have that before then, nor could we have afforded to do that as a public education. So Jason, if you can extend my thanks to the BHEF. I think they're fantastic partners in this work, in listening to what the board's goals are, and then aligning what the expectations for the district are with those goals. So thank you so much. A tremendous grant, $76,826.
Move to a separate gratitude.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you so much to the BHEF for working so hard.
Onto policies.
We did that.
Onto 11.1.
Just when you thought you got away, Robin.
We have Academic Intervention Services, Make-Up Opportunities, and Financial Software Controls.
These were second reads, yeah.
These second reads?
These are second reads.
These were second reads.
Talked about the last meeting, just quickly, the Academic Intervention Services, it's to ensure that we have a district-develop procedures in place, and specifically that we also clarify that we inform parents when their students enter Academic Intervention Services and when they exit. So this policy was just updating to new regulations and some clarification of regulations. The Financial Software Controls was revised to align to our practice. It wasn't tightly aligned, and we wanted to ensure that there's strong controls in place for our financial software, specifically in terms of making sure there's oversight in terms of who has access to what items. And then finally, Make-Up Opportunities, it was an old policy, and we wanted to update it to match our practice, specifically aligning our purpose, saying that it's important for students to be in school, but recognizing that students will be absent sometimes, then what do we do when students are absent? We wanted the policy to be very clear. Those are the three policies before you.
Move to approve policies 4325, 4716, 6685, as a second read.
Second.
Anybody have any questions, edits, thoughts? All right, all in favor?
Thank you, and thank you, Robin, for your contribution to the policy.
Yes, Robin, how many years were you on the policy committee?
I, a lot.
So many. More than not.
Oh, good work.
That's good, that's good.
You guys made it easy.
We have a brief enrollment update, I think, next.
Yes. And just before we get to the enrollment update regarding policies, Tim and Gina have done a tremendous amount of work on policy this year.
Yeah.
We are, we are in a really terrific place.
21 policies this year.
21 policies.
I checked last year, only 17 last year. Which is a lot.
Did Gina really help?
Yes.
I'm glad you paused to say that, because policy committee really does work incredibly well. It's productive, it's efficient, it brings lots of great ideas and thoughts to the board.
A lot of work.
Thank you, Tim and Gina.
And policies are great, but unless they are living, breathing documents for schools to follow, they're no good. So what I really love about this group is, after policies are passed, this group is making sure that at the building level, everybody's aware of what the policies are. That, that's the point that you could really miss out on the policy, doing the policy work in the first place, so.
Yeah, some like work.
Thank you so much.
Mechanisms afterwards.
That's right, great.
There's a lot of work goes into it.
All right, enrollment, very interesting. We, to date, have 29 additional kids enrolled for next school year. This is not even including the kids that we get over the summer. So right now, as of June 19th, we have 161 kindergarten enrollees. That is slightly less than what the demographer predicts. However, we usually have 10 to 15 kids over the summer, which would bring us well over what the demographer predicted. So I see that we will likely have more than what the demographer stated, and then, other than the, the kindergarten kids, in addition to the kindergarten kids, we also have 29 additional students from grades 1 through 9 who are enrolling. So, these are good numbers, we're happy about that.
How does that compare to usual, you think?
Oh, we don't have 29 kids enrolled, no.
It's a bump.
No, it's a bump.
It's good.
Could be a temporary bump, but it's a bump.
It's a bump.
Are we going to need to add sections?
We have added a section of kindergarten already.
That's great.
Yes, it is, very nice. And that's it for enrollment.
All right.
We did policy...
Onto, yeah, onto your report.
Policy, policy, policy. Okay, back to me. More exciting things. Just a little bit more recognition before the end of the night. First, I want to recognize again the BHEF. It is not only through the grant cycle that the BHEF has been supportive, but also through the InstaGrants. And I just want to say that for the 2018-19 school year, the BHEF had a budget of $20,000, of which $17,668 was awarded. InstaGrants are teachers applying for grants of $2,500 or less. So in addition to everything that we've been hearing from the BHEF for this entire year, we also have to remember that that is a very robust, I know you hate that word, Ira, but I love it, a robust InstaGrant program.
Can I see your evaluation for a minute?
You already wrote it. But just fantastic, you know, tonight we had Barbara Barthelmez here, who had written a grant for some Makerspace items to be utilized in the library. When Tim and I go to the middle school to have lunch, those kids are signing up for the library, and then they come over to check if any kid came off the list so they could sign up to go there. So it is a hotspot for kids at the middle school, BHEF supporting the fact that these InstaGrants enable the kids to go there and do something so meaningful and powerful to us. We have done so much as a district programmatically at the high school, with the teachers learning about place-based learning for the mathematics classes. The BHEF just recently also approved that grant, which is for the teachers to be able to have the tools that they need to go outside to do this place-based, place-based mathematics program. So just a huge thank you again to the Byram Hills Education Foundation. Next, the district, this is kind of, this is a little fun thing that happened, fun thing happened along the way. The State of New York Education Department just gave us, now, this isn't meant to be funny, but it's going to sound funny. In June of 2019, they gave us two awards that we are a recognition school of excellent for Byram Hills High School and for Coman Hill Elementary, but for the 2017 and 18 school year.
Oh, good.
So, but we just got it now, but, but that is fantastic. I'm so proud of that.
And Mary Beth's first year as principal, is that?
Not Chris's. Last year was Mary Beth's first year as principal, yeah.
That was Evan's.
But Chris as an untenured high school principal, still. That is absolutely...
You should tell Evan.
Yes, well, that was a blue-ribbon school, now...
Yeah.
Now we can change our phone system for Coman Hill and for the high school.
And for the high school, so we're very proud of that. The next is, just like I surprised Robin before, I'm going to surprise somebody else, I'd like to take a few minutes with Kelly to speak about Susan Calamarchuk. Susan's like, "What? What did I do?" Susan, you need to be recognized right now. You have done so much, so selflessly for this district forever, but particularly in the past couple of years. We had a very difficult time in the business office when we lost Greg Carlson, during the time that Greg was sick, after Greg was sick, through an interim assistant superintendent for business, through the finding of Kelly and the bringing of Kelly, and Kelly, I don't know if you want to add more, but in addition to what Kelly's saying, everything that you have to do on a daily basis and then some, you do with a steadfast resolve to give it every effort and every possible connection to Byram Hills that is meaningful, that is vetted, that is thorough. Any question that I ask Susan, she is there at the quick to answer, including multiple times when I've sent her, snuck out a little email on like a Saturday or a Sunday, like I just did this past weekend, and said, "Susan, you know, just thinking," when she got in on Monday, and she's like, "Oh, well, I'm at work, hold on just one moment, I'll check." And got back to me in a way, and, and it was really valuable information, but you're like that constantly. I just want to take this moment as a district, as a Board of Education, and me personally, to thank you for that. That is not the requirement of the job. The requirement of the job is to come in and do the job day in and day out. The requirement is not to give your blood, sweat, and tears to Byram Hills. That's what you do because that's your work ethic, and we appreciate that so much and value you so much every day.
Thank you, Jen.
I appreciate it.
I love Byram Hills graduates, so I have to continue.
That's right.
That's tough to follow, but I just want to thank you for, it'll be my first year here, the transition has really been seamless, largely in part to you. Susan was here, we had an audit last week, and they got done.
No, we've had an audit for kids. Oh, yeah, different audit.
We got it done, we got it done in a day, which is almost impossible, because Susan came in on Sunday for five, six hours, eight hours probably, more likely, and got the work in, got all the information ready for them, they came in, they completed it one day, which I've never heard of. So that is just one small, tiny example of the work, the work ethic that Susan has. I couldn't be more impressed, she's really an asset to this school district, and really somebody I look forward to working with, and I've been utilizing just, and extremely impressed with, just her thoughtfulness, her sense of humor, her passion for what she just does here, and I couldn't ask for a better, a better partner in this, so I really appreciate it.
You are appreciated by all of us.
You're going to make me cry.
I'm so dedicated. You are the best audience member every Tuesday. Now, Susan, you can bet your bottom dollar, or the district's bottom dollar, that there is no building named after you, but we named a pen after you. We're allowed to name a pen.
Thank you very much. Oh! Never to mention. Thank you, Jen, thank you so much. Oh my gosh, I just got a shock. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. Let him whisper, Jack.
Pretty neat. And second to last on my list tonight are, I love this, this is when the superintendent gets to recognize the board members. I have requested from the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association certificates to honor our board members. Every year, I say to put this on the refrigerator. And even those who have those refrigerators that don't have magnets, I always get a picture or two sent to me that it's taped to the front of the fridge. I would like to just honor, recognize, and commend our board members for this for-free work that you are doing for the sake of this community and for the sake of these children. It is so rare that you can find people in this world who want to do things just for the sake of others, and all of you do that every single day, never coming here with your own agendas, always coming here for the sake of this institution, for every single child and every single family, and for the families in the community to know that while you are doing the things you need to do as family members, there are other people who are taking care of your children who may not have ever met them, and that is pretty special. So I would like to recognize Mia Di Pietro. Robin Glatte. Your last one. I'll make one up next year. Mike Sanders, who's not here. Lori Canner. Scott Levy, our president. Lara Stangle is not here. Last but not least, Ira Shoman. You have a big goodie bag.
Lot of swag.
So Ira, do you have, is this your 20th now?
Yes.
Do you have all saved?
I do, you come to my house right in the freezer, you can just take them out and...
This was Lisa Davis's last.
Yes, Lisa Davis's.
Oh, that's special.
You have more goodies to talk about.
I have one more goodie. And we have from School Board U, NISBA's School Board U, a board achievement award that has been given to our very own Scott Levy, and that is for participating in NISBA Leadership Development Training. Each training that you do is the equivalent of a certain amount of points, and Scott has had a great achievement at 75 points of different leadership development training. He said this beautiful... He sent this beautiful certificate.
Is that like your grandmasters?
But this really like is beyond, Janine did not even put this in that see-through paper because she thought this one needed a frame. I think she thinks it needs a frame.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Can I just interrupt you for one second?
Yes. I'm finished, actually.
Oh, good. High time. I think we should, there are three people I think we have to thank before we go off camera. Mike Sparrow, you know, you're here every meeting, and you're in the back, and you watch us, and you do such a great job filming. Tonight, she didn't pass it out, a big thank you from us. Number two is our inveterate minute keeper, Donna. Great job again this year, Donna, so thank you so much. And lastly, I think I can speak on behalf of the board to thank our board president, Scott. I don't think this meeting should conclude without a thank you from your colleagues on the board for truly a year of exemplary leadership, given this is your first year as board president. I think we all have just been very, very impressed with your management of the process and by your running of the meetings, your putting up with me, and seriously, it's been a great year to be on the board and you've been a major part of it. So for much to you, Scott, congratulations.
Thank you. That is it for me.
All right, so anything, Tim, that you have?
Yeah, I do.
You sure?
Sarah looks like Iris was trying to land the brain.
They really are about that.
I'm just pulling back.
He's handling one of the guys.
I know, I know, I know, watching the clock. I do have two reports, so I thank the board in advance for your patience, and I will be brief, but again, I wanted to do diligence on these things. So the first report is, as you know earlier, we had a tri-state consortium visit to review, look at our Global Competence Initiative. Tri-state's consortium, just to remind the board and our public, is a consortium of high-performing districts in Connecticut, New Jersey, and New York, and there's about 45 different districts, and you have to apply to get in, and you have to do visits every several years to make sure that you're meeting the tri-state standards. So I asked them to come in and look at the global competence, which included the Global Scholars Program as well as other areas we're integrating it, so I want to give you a brief summary of their report. They're still tweaking and finalizing the report, but I did see the draft report, and I wanted to give you a summary by the end of the year. This was the essential question I asked them, which is how might we prepare our students to be productive and responsible citizens both locally and globally in the 21st century? And there were some sub-questions that dug into both the Global Scholars Program as well as other areas K-12. The overview is that we had 12 visitors come in, it was comprised of superintendents, assistant superintendents, and principals, and they visited our Global Scholars classrooms, they visited with students from all these different programs, including the middle school sale, sixth grade students in their Global Citizens Project, student leadership board, they met with administrators, and teachers, and parents, and Board of Education members to talk about your awareness and their awareness of our Global Competence Initiative, and reviewed a lot of documents. We put a lot of evidence together of our curricular materials and student evidence, surveys of students, and work samples that they looked at. Here are the commendations, I'll summarize some of the commendations, I won't go through everything, certainly if you have a question, ask about it. One thing I'll point out, they love the materials we were using. If you recall, in previous presentations, we're using a framework developed by the Asia Society, we're using some frameworks and rubrics by World Savvy, and World Savvy is working with us to develop the curriculum as well. They were really impressed with that material. They talked about students, when they were talking with students, students really do go deeply into content, and that was really impressive to the team. Students have talked about, we're finishing this year a survey of, about a six-month survey of our students with the Global Scholars Program, and I've been reading some of the preliminary data, and one student was talking about how they see issues as bigger than themselves now, you know, and that's really a lot seen from an adolescent, everything's about them, that they're seeing the world as bigger than them and issues are bigger than just their opinion. And they also are, I'm hearing a lot of feedback that students want more current events, and a lot of current events are, it's all about the current issues going on in the world. Students love exploring this. If you recall, we had 142 students registered for Global Scholars next year, which is remarkable. So they're asking for more of this, I think it's showing an area where students are wanting this type of work. And the student also said that when they were talking about this issue of having respectful dialogue and discourse, that that's part of the work that they do in Global Scholars and also in the middle school programs through sale and through the student voice circles, that students have to learn how to engage with each other, and one student in his reflection and the data that were taken in the survey said, he talked about the fact that debating isn't about convincing someone else, I've realized that debating issues is about learning more. And I thought that was really a mature way to talk about debating issues, because usually it is about convincing each other, but instead it was, they're starting to see issues as about, oh, I'm actually learning through dialogue and discourse, and that's what we're trying to teach, and that's something Jen Layden has been working on in her work at the Social Studies Department, but it's infiltrating through some of these other things that we're doing, and this is really great work. The tri-state team was seeing this by talking to our kids. A few more commendations I'll mention. They talk a lot about the students really expressing that, for some students, this is really transformational, that they're learning things that are, developing their passion, they're finding areas that they really want to study going forward into college. You heard some of the student presentations, we've had two over the past two years for Global Scholars, and some kids are really developing some real interest in areas. You've heard a student talk about looking at violence in prison, and she's really passionate. I see her in the hallways at the high school, and she's like, I talk to her every day and get updates, or whenever I see her and get updates about what she's learning. So these students really do become passionate, and that came through really clearly in the tri-state visit. And they certainly acknowledge our leaders, our administrators, and our teachers who have been developing this work, and also the administrators, Kim Lappel at the middle school, working with sale and the student government down there. A few recommendations that they make to us, and I can say many of these things are underway, they want us to find ways that students can share their learning from these projects with the greater community. We are doing that in Global Scholars within the school community, and they want, are recommending that we look at other opportunities for students to share their work beyond, and we are making some headway in that. We're meeting this week with World Savvy on Thursday and Friday to begin outlining year three and revise years one and two of Global Scholars, and they said, you know, such amazing things are happening with students' deep level of learning and the type of attributes that we're instilling in students, that they really want all of our students to have that experience, and how can these things, these experiences happen for all kids? And I can say through problem-based learning, through doing, having our students be more reflective and having choice in our curriculum, that we are on the way to doing that with all of our students, and that is a goal of ours. They love the materials we're using, these high-quality curricular materials in Global Scholars, and suggest that we find ways to integrate it in other content areas. They talked about, our mission statement talks about productive and responsible citizens, and they asked if we've defined that with the faculty, can everyone define what that means, and have we done that as a district?
Those are hard questions. They asked very hard, great thoughtful questions.
They did, it was a great team that we brought in to review this, and the final question is, what are your organizational norms that might impede our growth in these areas? And I can say these are underway, including, they list grading practices. I mentioned to the board before that we're going to take that on as a district focus next year, to look at homework practices, grading practices, and what rigor means to us. And it's stuff that's just good work for us to constantly be asking ourselves, what does that mean for us as a district? And looking at the school schedules, we've mentioned before, Chris Walsh is starting a scheduling committee, he's looking at the master schedule and evaluating that at the high school to see if the current schedule meets our needs. The answer may be that it does, or it might mean that we need to start thinking about some shifts in that master schedule and what are the implications of that. Certainly you'll hear about that going forward. And those were their recommendations, along with these quotes from their report. It was really terrific, and they were so impressed, and we now have interest in the region in Global Scholars, there's no one else doing this region. And we now have people visiting us, one other school district has been visiting this year, and they're going to start...
I've got approached by other board members, interestingly, that another district thinking about it seriously.
We have several districts coming and visiting, and now we're talking back in their districts about replicating some of the work we're doing. And World Savvy, who's been working with us, wants to use us as a satellite school to train people, and they're trying to get into this region. There's a lot of work being done out west and in the Midwest in this area that they work on, and they're looking at the East Coast as us being an exemplar, which is pretty incredible. And again, this is only our second year doing the Global Scholars Program, and even growing this to the middle school and eventually elementary. So I thank you, and I wanted to give you a summary of that visit, it was a really great visit, and put together lots of documents, and thanks for your support and listening to our students.
How many kids were in the first year?
First year, we had 67 students enrolled in the year of one.
It's more than double.
Really?
Yeah, that's out two years, and going into three years.
It's a three year.
Most of those, it's a three-year program, but we have, we accept kids at any year.
That's great.
Yeah, so we're trying to be flexible with kids who want to study world issues and global issues and get all these skills.
How many are science researchers?
118 are enrolled for September.
What 118s?
118.
Do you think about that program?
Was like this at one point, nobody knew about that either.
Right, right. Well, in this one, you take that one and this one, I mean, it's a lot of kids in that school that are in one or the other.
They're held in deep in tissue.
Deep dives.
We are giving them such a richer experience than many schools can offer, and kids are taking advantage of it.
Can they give up, or is it, it's challenging?
I think it would be challenging, but I think it's possible. I mean, it may become more possible as we're looking at ways, right now, Global Scholars Council is in elective credit, we're looking at ways to make it part of required credit. We just need to be in it a few years till we are comfortable saying...
How do we get an English credit out of it?
Or a social studies credit, or a world language credit, so that way it's not having to double up on something. So we're exploring that option.
That'd be a real significant change.
Exactly. We wanted, that was a goal of ours when we started this, we just couldn't figure out how to...
To game changer.
To make it happen and feel comfortable with meeting the standards and regulations. But we're, it's on our way.
That's great.
So thank the board for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue to talk to you about it as we get into year three. I have another report, that's right, I'm going right into my second report. So I wanted to follow up with our discussion on the executive coaching from last meeting. Jen and I spent a lot of time reflecting on it, and I just want to give you an update on our thinking. So let me just get this set up so you can see this plan. So I want to show a few things, starting with your goal for the board goal this year, goal number three, which the Board of Education shall support teacher and administrator leadership development to guide the greater K-12 vision. And I want to present this way, so Jen and I were really thinking about what you said, and it was really great feedback for us, and I think one thing I want to do is frame where executive coaching fits into the greater leadership development for administrators, and I want to also compare it to work that we do with teachers in professional development. So take, for example, before I get into the executive coaching and where it fits, when we implement a new math program, and you've heard a lot about the work Lisa Pellegrino's been doing, six through 12, and shifting the mathematics program, we've worked with a consultant and hired a consultant to work with our teachers. Lisa works with teachers through faculty meetings, I've been working with Lisa Pellegrino on developing the math program and giving her feedback along the way, as well as Chris Walsh and Kim Lappel as her supervisors. Some teachers have gone to take courses at Bosse's to learn some aspects of the shift more deeply, and Lisa's done some trips with people to the University of Michigan, the Department of Education, and now we have a partnership where they're doing some deep work in our high school math program, and they also visited the Island School where place-based learning was first encountered with some teachers. So that was, I think of it as spokes on the wheel, you know, there's lots of different pieces to really make the wheel function strongly, and so professional development isn't just one aspect, go and do this one thing, and then we can make something really great happen. And I see leadership development in the same way. So I want to frame where executive coaching falls within all of the things we do for our leaders. So I put together this chart, which is showing eight different ways we actively work with our leadership team, starting at the administrative retreat in the summer with the planning sessions, where we work on developing their leadership skills and developing their goals. And that's all done through the administrative team working together in conjunction with us. That's followed through then, through the administrative council meetings throughout the year, where we build upon that, and we use that to monitor and give feedback on their progress toward their goals. While that's going on, we have supervisory meetings, you know, all the administrators meet with district office staff in supervisory roles, as well as the chairs and directors meet with principals as well. Sometimes there's Bosse's programs that our administrators attend, our chairs in particular have collegial circles through Northern Bosse's, which is where they keep up with state initiatives and state mandates, and also some special areas that may come up in content. The tri-state consortium, which I just talked about, offers study groups where they examine and look at, each, different groups look at issues they're facing, and they often are reading educational texts together, and they also do training on visitation to other districts, like that team that came into us, who trained on their indicators. There's coursework that we approve, some recent coursework has been Harvard Graduate School of Education courses for administrators, it could be the success challenge work or other university courses that our administrators may take. There's different study groups, I form committees, I will work with groups, teams of teachers and administrators, and then executive leadership skills is just another spoke in that wheel that I believe adds to the strength of developing leaders in the district.
Where did you put this together?
I'm sorry? We did a pilot this year.
You mean this?
This, yeah.
Since the last meeting?
Since the last, just summarizing what we do, and it was just actually, it was a really great way to put together the plan of how we support leaders in the district. And then your feedback really got Jen and I thinking about, well, how do we monitor the executive leadership part? So that last line there, let's look at the framework. So this is how we could maybe have some district oversight and accountability to the executive coaching piece that I think might make you comfortable in seeing how this works within the greater picture. So as an administrator may be meeting with an executive coach, there would be four phases. So they would meet with their building supervisor to oversee their goal development, and so the supervisors would develop with that administrator the goals that they'll work with their coach on. And then...
This has been happening.
This has been happening as the pilot this past year. Then monthly review with the supervisor during the usual supervisor meetings, the supervisor would ask about, you know, what's your progress toward the goals? And then they would share their learning at council meetings, so those participating in coaching would be part of sharing their learning with the entire administrative team, so we can all benefit from their insights into the leadership skills they're learning. And then the supervisor at the end of the year would have a meeting to summarize the learning and how that impacted student learning and their work with their teachers. All of this, I believe, makes administrators highly effective, more effective, and making sure that we're continually growing and working toward our really vicious goals that we've been working toward as a district.
So if you think about professional development, we might have a professional developer come in and work with the administrative team, that's one person imparting knowledge to the group of us. This is a little bit different because you will have some people who are learning very different skills, and then at the end, as a council, they're bringing those skills back to us. So it's like we're getting the second-hand benefit of multiple professional development opportunities through this kind of model, as opposed to having somebody who comes in and works with us.
And I'll show you just one more quick thing, this is one of the coaches that I had working with two teachers that I vetted.
Two administrators.
Two administrators. She's currently at Columbia University Teachers College, it's Ellie Drago Severson, she is a professor of education, but also the director of the PhD program in educational leadership. Her background is doing her masters, her doctoral and postdoctoral work at Harvard. Her focus is supporting teachers, principals, and school people in leadership. And adult development is another area focused for her. She's written, I think it's about 12 books here, or co-authored books, this is one of the books that I've actually studied, and have used, one of her books that she co-authored with someone, and she's written dozens and dozens of articles. And with one of our administrators, she uses this theory, it's a lot about how you give feedback to adults and meeting their needs to get them to advance in their work, but she's been working with one of the administrators using this book, and I actually was trained in Immunity to Change, so really dense and intense book from the Harvard group that writes different books from Harvard Press. And it's a process of how you instill change and organizational change, and she's been using this theory and training one of our administrators in this particular work, which is really powerful. I didn't know that till I did my study, and I learned that they were using this book, and I'm like, oh, boy, that's really, you're taking a graduate course essentially, because that's an intense book, and I trained in that method. That gives you, I wanted to give you a little deeper flavor of who's working with administrators and the type of work that they're doing.
You put this together since the last meeting, among everything else you do, that's just amazing to me. This is like a monograph, it's just terrific.
Can you go back to that slide that, right before, right? Yeah, right here.
Yeah, this one here?
Yeah. The instructions. I mean, the one thing that helps out to me, and I guess now, you know, I have a better understanding, is I see now how they're not just there on an island themselves doing this, they are accountable to their supervisor and their principal, and it's teamwork, they're going to go work on the areas that are needed. Yeah, I feel better about that, because before, I guess, you know, I incorrectly thought they were kind of throwing off and looking at whatever they wanted to work on.
Well, I will say it was... Well, I will say, it was, as part of the pilot, it was, I sort of stepped back a little and let that relationship happen. There were conversations. Every administrator that I talked to had been talking about it to their supervisor. So it happened naturally. So what Jen and I heard from you is that I think we need, and we feel more comfortable having that oversight, and having that supervisory oversight, and building that into this explicitly. It's that it's just, that's sort of why I think pilots are really helpful. It uncovered that. Your questions at the last meeting really helped us see the benefit and the need for that.
And stressing that it's not a deficiency model by which we're working on this. It's not like somebody needs their own private leadership therapist like that. That isn't the model at all. The model is more like, what, what are the, what are the deliverables? What are, what is your vision? What is your thinking? And now, you may have 18 people in your department that you have to try to work this vision through. How do you go about successfully doing that? Managing people, looking for outcomes for students, and then really the bigger professional development model of coming back and sharing that. So incredible to know how many people are going to be looking at immunity to change, and some components of it, because this particular person is, has the responsibility to bring that back to the group. So just, I think, the last time, that message wasn't in there. I don't, I don't think that it was as fleshed out as to what part of this, like you said, spoken wheel.
We were working it through this year because it was a pilot. We were feeling it out. But your questions got Jen and I to really focus on, what does this mean for us, and how can we ensure that fits into the greater picture of our work with our administrative council?
What is your proposal or thought in terms of how many people just come in a year?
Yeah, I think I need to be conservative with it, and I'm, you know, I, I think, based on the pilot last year, and what I feel, it's probably going to be three to four people every year, maybe even, I mean, I can't even say it would be every year. I don't know. But I think next year I have four people interested in continuing. And again, I think people have benefited from it and just felt they wanted to put their time in other things, and feel like they have what they need right now. You know, they see all these ways that we support the administrator. So it's not like, it's just, you know, you're getting supportive or not. There are still all these things happening in a regular systemic way.
So you're continuing, and then you want to bring in a new three to four people?
No, no, just the ones who are continuing. Yeah, and I would only, you know, I would manage it, I would keep, I would just monitor and be thoughtful about how much we're putting toward this, and that it seems to make sense in the scope of the work that we do with people.
And it isn't necessarily a necessary model for every year. So, you know, when you look at Chris Walsh and Kim Lappel and their work with Challenge Success, that was the piece that they're bringing back to the group.
Right.
So there may or may not be a purpose for this particular piece in any given year, depending on what people's goals are, what higher education universities they're collaborating with, and what they're bringing back.
I think Jen and I would make determinants each year, what was appropriate for people. That this is an option that's there for people, and we will vet that based on an individual basis, and, you know, it just depends.
I'm glad you brought up Challenge Success, because that was brought to us by the foundation.
It was, yeah.
Is this something, since it changes, it's, you know, every year, so it can be new and innovative, is it something that you would ask for a grant from the foundation potentially for? Just as a thought, only because Challenge Success seems to have brought so much information to Kim and to Chris.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is something that could also-
The only reason I say no is because the BHF traditionally has not said, we will take over an expense that the district has identified as something that they want to do. The BHF is more, you know, what is the signature, the new thing, the one-to-one? Like, their expectation was never to, to backfill us with Chromebooks after the one-to-one. Like, they're, they are the support of the initiation of something, and not the support of an existing program. I would consider this just like an existing program.
Because when I was president, we did have certain grants, and some of them were even Instagrams for professional development that was cutting-edge. And this seems a little cutting-edge. You know, this is not the typical bring in the speaker. This is something above and beyond. So I just, it's just a thought that it's something that could be, I don't know, could be looked at as new and innovative, which is, I know what one of their limits has.
I think if it were the first time we were piloting it, it would be appropriate for the BHF, for, for what I see them taking on as grants, to have done that, to start the district on a new initiative. But I think to continue an existing initiative, it's not the same thing.
I will say for this pilot, half of the funds were paid for through a federal grant. I was being mindful of the expense last, you know, when I was planning this last year.
And of course, we went through BOSI, so then it was closer aimable. There were lots of-
And then other money was, yeah.
Moving forward, it's not going to be funds that are moved from somewhere else. This is new funds.
Is this in the PD bucket?
Yeah, it's in the PD bucket. So it's just a matter of every summer, and I'm at that time of year, I have been for the last two months, where I'm spreading out my funds and I'm balancing it out. And it's a, it's an act, and I've, you know, that's another thing, is where can I move things based on need in the district. And there was a feeling, there is some need here in this type of growth with our leadership team.
And just like every year, something, or every couple of years, something new, like balanced literacy, that's going to take some of our time. And so we may not be spending the professional development funds on something else, because the focus is on balanced literate, literacy, like it was investigations.
Yep.
I guess what I would say, well, first of all, very helpful presentation and thoughtful.
Thank you.
And I think generally, when you approach professional development, you really approach it very thoughtfully. And it's important, because it's such a big aspect of change management and all these new initiatives that we have. So I appreciate that. I think that if, if you're thinking about, at least from my personal view, if you're thinking about doing this on a really small scale again, talking about three or four people, it's very targeted. It's a fairly reasonable expense. It's within the PG budget that's already been approved. It's taking away from other PD, but obviously, this is something that you feel is having an impact. And obviously, if it has an impact on leaders, it's going to, it's going to perpetuate into the entire organization. I get all that. I see the value of it. I guess I would continue to say that I get concerned about, about this, just vis-à-vis our responsibility to like balance taxpayer dollars and be really responsible as a district. And, and so I think this is one where, at least my view would be, like, proceed on a very small basis, come back and continue to have dialogue. It's nothing that we have to vote on, obviously, but, but I think it's worth more dialogue if we were going to make this any bigger. If it's this small effort every year, I think it's so targeted, and so, that it probably may not need, you know, all this attention. But if we're going to become something bigger, I think it would need more real thought and discussion to just balance that feeling that I have, that at some point, we just have to be really judicious about taxpayer dollars.
Sure. I agree. And I'm always very careful and prudent in spending professional development funds. I have talked to Jen about it, and we, you know, I vet consultants very carefully, and I monitor things very closely, and look at the data. So I continue to do that with this as well.
This is a significant commitment, time commitment on the part of the participants. So-
That in itself will keep it small.
Exactly. And that's why maybe some are like, you know, I want to put my energy and time into something, and they feel they have the skills as well, and work within the existing structures, the other seven structures we have to develop.
And there may be something that moves groups in different directions over time. You know, this, if you say, oh, we're putting this into place, and 10 years from now, we still want to be doing this, there's something wrong with us. We don't, we don't know that. We don't know next year, or the year after. It's always measured, it's slow, it's thoughtful.
Does anybody else have any other thoughts or views, or?
I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Tim, that was great.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
And now the plane has landed.
Any more, Tim? It's only, it's only 11.
It's only 11 minutes to 11.
So a few presentations. In the next hour, we'll do it.
Each 30 seconds.
The next hour.
Can we get that RFP for the financial, for the, we send it out?
Yeah.
Can I get a driver?
Sure, I'll take you home, Jen. Don't worry about it.
Jen and I reviewed and interviewed some vendors and sample reports from four transportation consultants to look at our route efficiencies, as well as adjustments to our school start times, and how that affects transportation for next year. We chose one vendor based on the sample reports and excellent recommendations. It'll be on the agenda for next board meeting for your approval.
Excellent. Good news.
Very excited about it.
Let's hope it amounts to something material.
I think it will. I think it will.
Not putting a child on a bus before driving.
This is the same group that was used by a neighboring school district, who found great success with this group, and found it to be cost-productive and a very easy-
Saveable problems.
And then quickly, I attached the draft for the internal audit, RFP.